Going on seven thirty. Recording is a progress. We'll come to order tonight. Um. Before we start with the agenda. Um, I wanted to note that the first we have our weather report man. So you can, can you swing the uh? Camera around.
Carry away, weatherman.
Okay.
Good evening. And last year at this time, and you can check it on the audio vault. I got up and said that I thought we were going to have a very mild winter. With negligible snow. But. That's I'm not whistling that tune again this year. But first of all, in the short range, because we're looking ahead to Thanksgiving a little bit. Uh, we're gonna get another seventy degree day tomorrow. We had seventy today. It was doesn't get any more beautiful in. Mid to late November than today. And um. We should get some rain here on Tuesday, maybe about an inch. And and Wednesday too, which is travel day, but I hope most of the rain. Will be out of here and off the east coast. When people are doing most of their traveling on Wednesday. So that uh, that should deliver a very nice Thanksgiving day. Albeit on the cool side, but but normal low to mid fifties. And uh, going forward into the months of December, January, February. Um. Let's. Let it rip. What's his, what's the guy's name here? Hyman? I should know John because I've known him for many decades. Uh, he better get the snowplow ready and.
Okay, we're looking forward.
Hmm, so that probably will come more like toward the end of the winter in February.
Those have longer driveways than others.
I'm not gonna say that we're gonna, you know, get. Anything like we had in twenty sixteen, because that came all at once. But uh, we're gonna have the way the weather pattern is going to be set up here. This winter is to have a northern jet stream. And a subtropical jet. And that doesn't bode well for storms coming up the east coast. Uh, not just snowstorms, but ice storms. Hopefully, most of that's gonna miss us to the west, bring in more southerly winds here and and most of that precipitation could be rain, but. I think we're gonna see a few storms here. We're gonna get some of these Alberta clippers that come down out of the Dakotas. And down through the Ohio Valley come down under us. And that that gives us like two or three inches of of a dry pottery snow, but it's gonna be interesting. So that's and and that's pretty much in agreement with the with a lot of people other thing uh, are thinking about it. I'm not, you know. Going against any of those other outlets that make the long range outlook. But with that, my time is up and I do thank you for your, I'll be back to talk about community engagement.
Good, thanks. Okay, um. I wanted to note that the survey results are in. We're gonna have a presentation from Jeff later. I wanted to make one or two comments about them right now. First, we had the highest return ever from the community survey. And we had over or close to uh, eight hundred comments. Which I particularly ver- uh, valued because it really gives context and meaning and substance. To the bare question. In fact. I kind of ignore the the question results, the survey, and go straight to the comments. But in those comments, there was a very bad. Misstatement of beliefs or or beliefs that are wrong about our building code enforcement. There are a number of people who said that we are not policing the building code. That builders are getting away with things, that our building code administrator Doug Loemeyer isn't doing the job. I want to tell you categorically that is incorrect. Uh, we are policing the building code to the best degree possible. When you see a statement or hear a statement that there was a bill, a a wall check. Done on the on the height of a wall, the length of a wall plane. That's not us. It's not the builder. This is an independent licensed surveyor who is hired. Uh, to to do that. If if they. State that incorrectly, if they're false, they make a false statement, they can lose their license. Uh, so. If you have complaints about the building, it's probably not about building the code, but the code itself. Uh. And that's something we'll be discussing later. Uh, there were a couple of other uh, points that came up repeatedly. People really seem to want their composting. It's about to happen. Michael will tell you in a few minutes. Uh, that we were about to sign a contract with a with a compost company. In fact, the one that has been serving the the village. Uh, but we had to put out a request for proposal. We had to get bids coming in, evaluate the bids and all that took time. And the second, following what with 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 what Keith Keith just said about snow. Uh, the shoveling. The snow shovel line contract, I believe, has been signed, hasn't it?
Correct.
Yeah, we have signed that. So when you get your six to twelve inches. And you feel that you can't do it yourself, sign up in advance, it will be done. Now, that's just the public side luck for not shoveling up to your front door. Uh, someone else will have to be responsible for that. Finally, I going to resident comments, among the other numerous. Issues that were raised was that we keep hearing the same old voices. In the resident comments, taking that into account, what I would like to suggest that any any residents today. Who are wanting to be heard, I want to take those who have not spoken. Uh, in the last few months, take them first, put them to the head of the line. If we've been hearing from you uh, recently, you're going to the back of the line. You're gonna be heard. Uh, but just after the other, if there are any uh, who wanted to be heard first. So with that, let's go to resident comments. Anyone?
Hi, this is Marty.
Hello, Marty.
I'm not at the back of the line here.
Go, I want to see if there's anybody else.
Absolutely, glad to wait my spare.
Uh, no, you're the one. Go ahead.
Okay. I I had a question about. How ordinances are introduced and is there going to be a standard operating procedure again? I know back in twenty one. Uh, Arthur, you developed um, a nice short protocol. For how ordinances would be introduced and explanatory stuff. And, you know. I I'm concerned because I I'm not sure that was done with the ethics ordinance, but I'm also concerned about. What the requirements may be for the election ordinance this year, which you'll be receiving, you know, from the committee in in December. Should we do a short write-up about it uh, for the public? Is that gonna be, that was part of the requirement twenty one. And I'm just wondering, you know, what's the standard operating procedure now?
But we we don't, literally, we don't have one.
But but when we introduced the ethics ordinance, first time that the council drafted. And we need some statement.
There was a statement, yeah. Um, yeah, I really liked my proposal and then kind of forgot about it. Uh.
Arthur?
The uh, I yeah, I think it makes sense.
Arthur, I couldn't hear what that some lady said something. It was.
Oh, yeah, that lady was council member Susan Faddeh. Who said when the ethics ordinance was introduced, it did have a document. That introduced and explained it. Well, I kind of like that idea. Um, it's kind of fallen by the wayside. I think we may have used it once or twice. Uh, but it's a good idea and it's not, it's it's not formalized. We don't actually have a formal procedure or a formal uh. Uh, procedure for doing it. Just introduce it that that formally, all that's required.
Um, well, let me just if I just. Yeah, exactly. And I know it's in the meeting packet for this evening. I think. We should recognize back in February of two thousand twenty one that we actually did go over this fairly substantively. Where and it was also because of some of the things we experienced before that specific to the sign ordinance and the ethics ordinance for the first time. And in fact. Ron had very cogently provided. Um. A fairly detailed explanation of what. Was a recommended or thoughtful minimum process. And then, Arthur, if you may recall. You actually also had introduced at the time. A statement. About proposed ordinances shall be accompanied by an explanation of need and and arguments and things. So I'm just sharing.
I I know, I I like that one.
Yeah, exactly. No, no, I'm just putting it out there that.
Right.
As as recognition that that you and others on the council have thought about this. And and have have really put some common effort. That's all. Thank you.
No, I think that an explanation would be in good or good order. Uh, so feel free.
Susan Khan. And Jean Spurley.
Okay. Susan?
Hi. So I. Was going to, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I was gonna just say something similar about. Um, with the ordinances, I was just kind of wondering, is the process that is even if something gets voted on, then the next. Time another council member decides they changed their mind on it, will it be reintroduced again? Because it seems like when we reintroduce them so quickly, it just causes a lot of resident. Um, a lot of energy of residents has to go into the same issue again and again and again. And I was just wondering if there's any, you know, what the process was on that, or if it's just that every single um. Uh, new council that comes about can reintroduce the same thing. So that's all. Had a question about that. And then the other thing was just about the survey itself. Um, thank you for conducting the survey and all the excellent questions. Um, I will say the question regarding the ethics ordinance, I thought was rare, really kind of obfuscating. I couldn't. Understand it that well, and I think it might just be useful to think about the process of. Putting that together and ge- getting different eyes on the different questions. Because i- it didn't even use the word ethics in it, and I just think it could be useful to have more, um, you know. A number of people getting their input there who might have expertise in in that area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um.
Jean's.
Okay, Jane.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. Um. Arthur, I I'm I'm very. Disturbed about. Your comments about. You perceive that it were a lot of people. Were upset about the way the building. Permits were handled and that they were finding fault with them. Um, the the fact that there's so many people, I don't, I haven't seen the data. Uh, that feel that way, that in my in and of itself should be something to say to you. Ha, with something, we're not doing something right here. If that many people are upset and you're so sure that you're doing everything just fine, that was a disconnect. Um, and I would urge you to pursue that. One of the things that could be corrected would be more public announcement of. Building permit applications. What the permit applications entail. There was a great. There is a great document that I put together. As a matter of fact, I still have, if you can't find it. Which compares the application with the standards that are there, wall plane length, wall plane height. Uh, uh, lot coverage, it's it's there. If you. Took if your building, our building administrator took. The standards from the application and compared them or the the requests in the application, compared them using this form. With what the requirements are and confirmed with a check mark in the box. This meets our qualifications and you made that public. This would dispel. The concern that. You seem to have uh, that this being misperceived. Confirm it. And this likewise with variances, it it would, there is a procedure that. You don't grant a variance and that this is the way the law was set up. After the fact, a variance has to be granted before you start to build. And the only way you can do it is knowing that a variance is gonna be needed. And then also that you've met that it meets the standards for. Why a variance is needed, and it's not just because you want more space or you want your house to be bigger. But there's all sorts of requirements in the law that um. Apply to whether or not you actually get the variance, the lot size, the lot lot configuration doesn't work with the building plans. It's all there. I would like to see. You make sure. That this information is made public when the application comes in, when the application is reviewed, and then when the application. Is approved and that your building, our building administrator confirms to us and to you. This meets the existing code and no variance is needed so that it after it's all done, somebody can go out and see, in fact, if that was correct. So. My thoughts on that, um, I would like you to please give that some consideration. And with regard to. The survey, I would like to know who designed that because I thought it has some weaknesses.
Yeah, I I actually, I mainly designed it with help from my counsel, and I agree after going back over it, I thought, who did this? Uh, and I said, oh, I did. But I want to get back to your.
Okay.
I I want to get back to your point about uh. That uh, you as it it's the same thing when you were here, when the plans come in, the building administrator goes over them. Before anything happens and will frequently go back to the. Architect and the builder and said, this does not meet the code, revise the plan. Then when the, when we actually get a construction and we get the wall checks and we get the measurements. These are done by, as I said, independent licensed surveyors. When I think people are complaining about. Is that it just looks too big, too long, too high. Uh. And it, I can assure you it meets the code. But what this.
How can you assure me of that?
Well, I can assure you by the process. Uh, unless the surveyors are falsifying their results.
Who are these surveyors?
These are the licensed survey.
Are they are, are they our employees? Who are?
No, they are neither our employees nor the builder's employees.
Who's, who are they?
Who who are they? They are hired.
They, yeah. The the county requires it and we require it as well.
Oh, it's the county?
For height checks.
They're not, they're not hired by the county.
No, wall checks, height checks. Um, are all required by independent inspectors that come out and and measure it, and those are certified documents that we get copies of.
Who pays for them?
The builder pays.
And we're sure that they're using our standards and not the county standard.
Oh, yeah, oh, no, they know.
Okay. I've just never heard of surveyors coming back out.
And and Jean, Jean, to your point about, you know, publishing a checklist or a, you know, confirmation. Cover sheet or something for each project, I am working on something like that. Um, I don't have.
It exists. I'm happy to share that document with you if you'd like what's.
I'm working on it on a slightly different version where we can actually have it on the website and on the wall in the office. So I'm working on that. Uh, and that's coming.
Thank you.
So so I think when people are complaining, they're not, what they're complaining about is the end result, not. The process, what what they can blame is the inspector, they can blame the village, they can say we're. Working with the with the builders, that's all false. Now, I will grant you, these licensed surveyors can be falsifying results. Um, and we don't know that. We, when we have gone out and measured and I've. I've requested specific measurement from Doug or Wayne at times that they've gone out with their tape measure. Uh, to the side setback or to the side boundary, it's correct to within an inch. So the builders are taking advantage up to the code. We have no evidence that they are going beyond that. So. With, in our knowledge, nothing untoward is happening. Uh, any other comments?
Larry.
Larry.
Uh, yeah, um. I I don't think that's exactly accurate. Um.
What what bit is the inaccurate bit?
I'm thinking back about um. When was Tom Plotz, uh, chair of the council?
Uh, before we had a building code, that's what he.
No. In any case, this is like, let's see, Taylor Street, the construction at Delfield and Taylor. Maybe four years ago, maybe five years ago. And Tom's just an attorney. He's not a surveyor or uh. Skilled in in uh, being a building inspector or anything. Um. But he realized that that house on the corner was out of compliance with our ordinances. And brought it up, and it turned out he was absolutely right. And at the time. The council was discussing with our village uh, engineer. That um. It was the discovery that that he wasn't so aware of them and he wasn't following them so well. Then I heard about a year ago, a similar situation happened. Where some of the ordinances weren't being met and in the conversations, the engineer or the village. Sort of pretended that he or, well, maybe forgot again, that he wasn't following stuff. So. And then there's been a whole bunch of closed session meetings and. So a lot of people, I'm maybe not a lot, but some people sort of feel. That um, maybe the things. Aren't being handled the way they should and um. The village isn't being informed about it or keep being kept up to date. So when you say. That uh, or be annoyed at the at the those damn villagers for. Being irritated, it's because they hear things are going wrong. And the village itself sees no responsibility to to in a state that follows sunshine government. Doesn't do a good job of being a sunshine government.
Well, I I, there was one case that we know of recently. Where there was a mistake. And Doug was crestfallen over the fact that he had missed something. Uh, that was brought up by a resident, uh, and and the resident was correct. To to my knowledge, and I've looked around the table, is anyone aware of any other error? I I don't, not sure the one that you're referring to on Thornapple. Um, there was a request for a variance that was turned down there. I don't know any other. Error that was made that.
Had to do with the size and it's had to do with the number of garage doors and the size and the placement, and it was all screwed up. And there was a discussion about whether or not. The council should pursue it because it would be costly to fix and the builder might sue the count, the government. So that's what I recall.
That was twenty twenty, I think. That was twenty twenty. You're right. That was only, yeah, that was three years ago.
Yeah.
It was, it was a a width issue of the driveway and garage. This is the new, the new house on Thornapple.
Two fronts.
Yeah.
Corner lawn.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And 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 as I recall, it wasn't on the council, but I remember the council just kind of saying. But I guess it's a mistake and we're moving on.
It's a mistake.
Okay, it was a mistake. Okay, okay.
Tom Plotz served from nineteen ninety-three to nineteen ninety-eight.
Right.
And Doug and Harumi are.
Okay, yeah, I saw Doug, uh, Tom Plotz was on the council a long time ago.
Right. Well, he, he brought this uh, issue up that we're discussing.
Oh, okay.
And and he and he couldn't understand why he couldn't get a straight answer out of the council when he came to the meetings and talked about it. And so your villagers do have a basis for being unhappy because. As I said, there's just no medium where. Things that the council does or the government does each year. Uh, like like in a, you know, an audit of that. How how did we do? What what were the things that, you know? Are are keeping people informed about what the concerns are.
Okay, well.
No, it's a big issue, communication.
No, no. Okay, uh, now we go to either Doug or Harumi or both.
Uh, thanks, thanks very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, uh, so thanks very much for this conversation. I just want to say I can't speak to any of the comments that you mentioned. We didn't include any comments in our entry, but. I will say this, that um, uh, earlier this year. When we um, uh, expressed concern about the lot coverage at thirty-four nineteen Cummings. We were informed by the building administrator. That the lot coverage restrictions in the village code. And the calculations were the same as the county code, that there was no difference between the county and the village code. Now, of course, that's not true. The village code is more restrictive. And so when we pointed that out and we said, well, actually, that's not our reading of the village code. Uh, and we pointed it out to the building administrator. And at which point he said, you know, you're right.
Yeah, that's where, that that's, I acknowledge that was an an error on his part and he felt. Uh, you don't know how bad he felt after you pointed that out that he had missed it. It was a genuine error.
Okay, that's the, I I I I don't question the sincerity there and I my my intent is not to impugn anybody's integrity or character. But it does raise a question as to if at that point. If that is the point at which he became aware that the village code that he was charged with with monitoring and and enforcing. Um, during. All all the time prior, um, then then there is a problem and I think I would just echo. Uh, the the suggestion that you do take a look at 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 this situation and. Uh, to to echo the earlier comment about communication, I'll 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 also say that, you know, when we had the informational meeting. About the construction um, uh, on Cummings Lane. Uh, the meeting was quite long, as I recall, it was about an hour, and many concerns were raised, including about. Um, stormwater management and and other issues. Um, and uh, that me, that meeting took place earlier in the week, I believe on a Tuesday or a Wednesday. There was uh, the subsequent village council meeting on Thursday, the building administrator. In his report to the council said. Uh, it was a short meeting, some concerns were raised about noise and parking, but no major issues. Now, I was not in attendance at that meeting because I was traveling overseas and couldn't it couldn't uh, log on because of the time difference. But I listened the next week um, to the to the recording of the meeting. And was um, surprised that that was the readout. And I expressed in 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 a written communication to members of the council and the village. That I was concerned that proper systems were not in place. For keeping the village council informed um, and and cited that um, uh, exact. Uh, quote, and and I'm not paraphrasing here, um, the building administrator's report to the council. That is. Uh, the the quote and and um, the extent of his report. And I got an acknowledgement back from the village manager that uh, his report did omit. Um, some of the uh, matters discussed at 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 the meeting. So I do think there is an issue. Um, that uh, should be addressed here, and I can only speak to those two. Instances, but they are concrete and factual and um, and and again, my intent is not to impugn anybody's integrity, but to. But to raise the issues before the council. So thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. Um. Do we have any more comments? From the floor? I see none.
Arthur, I just want to, I just want to respond very briefly to Doug and Harumi. I just want to say thank you, um. And we all recognize what you've also. Experienced and gone through and and the stress that you've you've had. So we appreciate this and and that acknowledgement. Um, and I just want to point out that Arthur. Again, to his credit and thoughtfulness, has put later on a discussion of the building code and some things. And just recognizing uh, during that time on the agenda, I think there were a couple of pieces from. The last meeting that I think will come up, things like the calculations, the footprints. The pertinences, water retention devices. And perhaps, I don't know if it'll happen today, but. You know, working with our manager that if there are things that really look like they are. Really on the tail end of the curve, that really. We know now from this experience of 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 things that really we should be paying very close attention to. And that perhaps that we do for certain very specific things that we know have caused an issue. Um, we really flag those and that we have, you know, some discourse as a council to review those, we. Double check the figures, things like that. So I just want to mention that's happening later on tonight, and. I think we all recognize that we've learned from this experience and we really hope not to repeat. At least in the specific situations that we've encountered that have caused these issues, so.
Okay, thank you. Um, the agenda says we will not hear the managers report, but we have two people here from the fire board that I would like to bring forward. Uh, who will describe. The local firehouse up on Connecticut Avenue and the citizen support group. Uh, we generally have three members from Martin's additions. We have two now, so there's an open position. So we are inviting volunteers. If you like fire trucks. And if you like firemen, now's your chance. So Paul Weller. Paul, you have been on the board for how long?
Uh, actually, two years.
Oh, you were on there forever.
Often on, often.
Often on, okay. When, how about you on your on time? When were you first on?
Um. You know, probably about six years ago, seven, about six years ago or so, I was on for a period of time.
Okay.
Could I ask if Paul Walker could speak up?
I'm on the board of the fire department.
Okay, can can he not be heard? Okay, can can he not be heard? Can you hear Paul?
I it was difficult to hear his voice.
Um, do we have?
I I think it's two people talking drowns it out. Only one person can talk in this room.
Okay, let we'll let Paul talk by himself and see if that's better. Go ahead, Paul.
Well, what I was saying is that I'm on the board of the Chevy Chase Fire Department. And I wanted to tell you all uh tonight a little bit about that fire department. And what it means, what it how it came about and so forth. But the citizens of this area um got together about nineteen twenty-six. Decided they wanted to have their own fire department. And so they bought the land and built that building. And it's one of the few in Montgomery County, Maryland, where you have the local community owns the building, the land. And of course, we don't have the equipment, or we don't have the first responders. Because they're they're county employees and county equipment. But anyhow, uh, I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Uh, my feeling is from the beginning that if you have representatives. That those representatives have an obligation to report back to you on what they're doing on your behalf. And so that's why we're here. Natalie, uh man Natalie, if you wanna. Anyhow, seven local jurisdictions here in the Chevy Chase area. Um, have representatives uh on the Chevy Chase Fire Board on that fire department up there. And very quickly, it's sections three, four, five, uh, three, four and five, the Village of Martin's Editions. Uh, North Chevy Chase, Rollingwood and the Hamlet. Those all have representatives on that fire board. Uh, there's seventeen of us, I'm on that board. And we we manage that that operation up there, if you will, on your behalf, of course. Uh, we receive monthly reports uh from the station commander. Here's one of them. It's a two-page report and it says everything that's happened uh during that month. For that with by that fire department. To give you uh just a quick report. Uh, they had um a hundred and fifty-three incidents uh during the month of October. A hundred and fifty-three. Three were hazmat, which are all, of course, on the Beltway. And and fifteen of them were other incidents that happened on the Beltway. We we service that Beltway that goes uh throughout this whole area up here uh from that fire department. Um, so that's 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 the responsibilities that they have. Um, the surrounding property up there uh is owned by the community here. You have a piece of it, I'm sure. Uh, but but these these jurisdictions own that particular. Uh, fire department, uh, the land and and so forth. We don't own the equipment and we don't own the the people who manage it. But because they're county, of course. Um, we have about half a dozen actual fires on a monthly uh on on a month. Uh, most of it is, of course, uh medical. And uh uh we have a twenty-four hour EMT up there that's there at your discretion. Uh, any of you here in this area who call nine-one-one, you're gonna get our people out of that fire department. And in that fire department, Bethesda Chevy Chase Rescue Squad has put a an ambulance there. So now we have an ambulance. It's in the past, we didn't have an ambulance. We just had the the fire pumper. Uh, and uh and hazmat. Uh, Montgomery County has two hazmat units. They have one here, which is ours on Chevy Chase. And that's the Beltway part. And then they have one up county. So you have two hazmat and those are half million dollar machines that are, they have everything with one thing. So gives you an idea of how well it's covered on that area. Uh, what are some of our issues? Uh, lithium batteries. We we can't put out a fire on a lithium lithium battery very easily. And so we're still fighting that area. We get a lot of gas leaks, uh, natural gas. Uh, in people's homes, they they will call us. Um, rush hour traffic. Um, our board is very concerned as the number of uh. People living in this area, Chevy Chase Lake being developed and so forth. Uh, they're very concerned about trying to get in and out of that place uh during rush hour. Uh, we're not sure how that's gonna come in the past or in the future, I mean. Uh, and local development, there's been uh some discussion about carrying the library down. Or uh in other words, putting up a six-story building and have the library at the first floor. And then above that, you would have uh some kind of uh housing condos and so forth. Um, we operate uh on about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Between the fire board and the various uh groups that are in that in that station up there. So uh that's money that mostly we raise from the local community.
You do what? What do you do with it?
What do we do with that? We keep the station, we own station, so we have to keep it, we have to keep a roof on it. Uh, we have to keep it cleaned and so forth uh to ma- maintain the station. Uh, we have to buy equipment. We bought, we bought, uh, you know, some of the firemen, some of their equipment, so forth. Uh, and so that's the money that that comes mostly from contributions. You'd be surprised how much comes in. Um, we have a really good liaison with uh fire and ambulance staffs. In that station, which is unusual, I think, for some of the geographical areas here in Montgomery County. So um, this is a real asset of this fire station up there. Um, and it is open to everybody. You'd be surprised at the people that come in. Can you take my blood pressure? Uh, and and so forth. It's it's a clinic in a way. Because we have a twenty-four hour EMT uh tri- hot train uh that's there. And uh they can they can give somebody immediate support. So.
Can I ask you a question, Paul?
Yeah.
To 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 do that, I had an experience where I tried to get the attention of that firehouse. On the side door, I don't know if that's that's it's not Club Drive, I forget.
Yeah.
Is that Club Drive?
I think so.
Um, and there's a phone there.
Yeah.
And I picked it up and there was no dial tone or ringing or anything. I knocked on the door and there was no response. Is it better to enter?
If they're on a call, they're not there.
Yeah.
The best way to enter is in the back, up the steps, on the deck.
Deck.
On the deck, yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah, we carry.
Shouldn't there always be someone who's answering? Like, isn't there a dispatcher in that in that operation?
You're on the second call.
It's only the firemen.
Yeah, you're on the second call.
Firemen are the, the ambulance also has their own crew from DC, they rescue.
Got it.
They they don't want walk-ins.
Well, if it's an emergency, I mean, I didn't want to be a walk-in.
There's always somebody there, except when the phone rings and they have a call, they all go.
Yeah, yeah, okay, just curious. Thanks.
Yeah, so so basically, uh, the telephone's the best contact in there. Um, and and uh they're there twenty-four hours a day, as as I said. There's a um, a full five-person uh group, uh, team that's on the uh, on the equipment. Um, and uh they're, I think they're very highly trained, thank goodness, uh, by the county. Uh, but we own them. We we own that property up there. Um, if you have any uh opportunity, the, we can set up a uh, you know, a tour of the property. Or uh, uh, anything, uh, and uh Natalie and I can certainly, you know, set something up for you. If you'd like to, you'll you'll walk through and see the dormitories up up upside and so forth. Uh, we've had a lot of trouble with the uh, with the air in there, the air conditioning and heating. Uh, we spent a lot of money on that uh because of the, you know, that they're twenty-four hours a day, so they're sleeping up there as well. Uh, so that's one of been one of our problems. But basically, um. Uh, we have a half a ton pickup truck that's up there. We have an ambulance for the rescue squad. We have have a hazmat unit and then we have a a county provided uh pumper, bumper truck. Um, uh, which is there all the time. So, um, Natalie.
Anything?
What would you like to add?
Yeah, you did it pretty good.
Oh, I haven't.
I've only been there about twenty-two years.
Yeah. She's she's.
Real help.
That Natalie, uh, are you or Paul, are you aware of any of the other firehouses or? In the county who have this kind of uh setup that goes back to volunteer days?
Uh, Station Six.
Where where they?
Bradley.
Um.
Station Six is really kind of part of us. We're Station Seven. Um, and uh. Um, I'm not sure of any others in down county, are you?
Uh, the stations in the county are volunteer. I don't know how many actually are, um, we had no volunteers. Uh, some of the stations had both volunteers and union, but ours are strictly all vol- uh strictly.
Union doesn't like that.
I'm sorry. No, they don't care.
Uh, uh, we used to have volunteers, but when the union came in, uh, basically, they're all county county union people that are in there. Highly trained, uh, very competent. Um, so.
And it's very good also being the rescue squad there because when there's.
We have.
Call and there's a lot of traffic, they couldn't get over to this part of the count on Bradley, you can't travel when it's. Rush hour, east-west highway, you can't travel in the rush hour. So we have, they're stationed there from seven in the morning, I did almost twelve, fourteen hours a day. Yeah. Tears.
Um.
So Arthur, Arthur, if I may, I was on the board.
Yeah.
For twelve years.
Oh, that's right. Go ahead.
Little better uh background. Uh, there are actually eight other. Fire departments that were professional fire departments uh rather than volunteer in the county. And um, we actually paid the salaries of all of our firefighters. Until somewhere around uh the nineteen nineties. And at one, finally, at one point, the, all of the firefighters in the county created a class action lawsuit. Saying that when they were living there twenty-four hours a day, that was their cycle. That they should be paid double uh and and two and a half times overtime because we were not a government. We were a private fire department. And to resolve that lawsuit. Montgomery County hired all of the professional firefighters in the county. So one day you were you were fired from us and the next day you were employed by the county.
Right.
The other important thing to know, and that happened in the nineties, um, the other important thing to know is that WSSC. Uh, in develop, created in nineteen twelve, uh, put into fire hydrants. Since so many of the fire departments were volunteer fire departments and had. Lumpy training, they often damaged or broke the fire hydrants. And so even unto today, it is the policy that. W WSSC owns the hydrants. And no one can service them but WSSC, who of course doesn't have the budget and doesn't actually do it. Despite what they've told you and and you will see that that their claim you're getting, you're gonna get your, all your hydrants looked at this year. Is bogus. But here's my point. Since they, the, our own local fire department, they can't even inspect our hydrants. Okay, and this is why we're having such a problem getting our fire hydrants properly functional. When we had a fire on Summit several years ago. They had to hump the pipe, the hose, three hundred feet because the hydrant directly across from the the thing. Couldn't be found hidden in the shrubs covered by a car parked there. When they humped the three hundred feet of hose. Turned on the hydrant, the hydrant dumped all kinds of sediment from the pipe, totally clogged the hose. Which had to all be attached and flushed. And then, by the time they got water on the fire. The house had burnt down and damaged the adjacent property. So I'm sorry to be yak yakking and nagging about our fire hydrants. But this is the great, this is the right opportunity to bring it up.
Well, Larry actually reminded me of something. First and foremost, thank you for serving on the fire board, uh. Paul, Natalie and Larry. Uh, uh, we had a scare on Saturday night on Chestnut. And the Chevy Chase Fire Department arrived, uh, it was a chimney of fire uh and started sparking outside. And uh the Chevy Chase Fire Department was here within minutes and resolved the situation. The family evacuated and the pets, everybody's safe. It was resolved, but the uh, the the homeowners, my friends, they were telling me that the fire department. Was really frustrated because the um fire hydrants were covered up and down Chestnut by cars. So it's a Saturday night, a lot of visitors. So they had to um come over to the fire hydrant on Taylor Street and um tap into that. And it was flush and it was working very hard. So our fire hydrant was working on Saturday night. And everything is is okay, but public service announcement. Please don't park in front of parking hydrants, even, I mean, um, fire hydrants. Even if you think it's just you're gonna run into somebody's house or you're you're a guest visiting or delivery drivers, you know. Not to call Uber Eats out, but people pull pull in and and so they were really frustrated, but every every minute counts. And so, yeah.
We need to get the the uh, the fire department, Montgomery County Fire Department, or Chevy Chase Fire Department, if they're available. Uh, to enforce this parking.
Yeah.
In front of those hydrants. But let me tell you about the hydrants because uh up until, I don't know, two, three years ago. Uh, we had a lot of hydrants that weren't operational.
Hmm.
And and uh we have put emphasis on those fire hydrants. And as far as I know. And and Natalie can acute and can bring up anything about difference, but that all of our fire hydrants are checked. And operational. So you shouldn't have any problem with that at all. Now, if you get five or six inches of snow and snow's piled up in front of them. Uh, then we put these sticks and you can see some of those around for the fire hydrant.
Seeing the sticks.
But basically, our fire hydrants are operational. Uh, you've got really competent people with the latest.
That's true.
Uh, to your.
That's true.
Well, thank goodness to Chevy Chase Fire Department because, again, the fire, they they started a fire in their fireplace. And I think it hit a bird's nest and then it started sparking and it's been so dry, as you know. And we were near a lot of trees, it could have spread and thankfully, they were here fast and they put it out, so.
An add on to that, uh, Paul, maybe you can hear me. As I recall, there was one ladder truck with six other fire vehicles. That attended that uh fire. Isn't that correct, uh, Katie?
It was quite the scene, yeah.
That's what I would call efficiency or.
Was all red link, yes.
Yeah.
Up and down.
But anyhow.
Paul, I have a question.
You shouldn't have any problem uh with the with the fire hydrants. I think I think we're okay with corner fire hydrants, so.
Okay.
I do have a question, yeah. Does the fire department um provide any um CPR or first aid training or workshops? That would um certify people?
Yeah.
I don't think so.
Red draw, yeah.
Well, we used to, no, we used to have them there. I took a CPR course there.
We're, we'd be interested in having people come in here.
And there's there's, there's two other things. It used to be the fire board members. Would come to go to each of their sections uh every three years. With a letter from the fire department that described the um, the the county. Code requirements for addresses. And I remember doing that every couple of years and I would always find at least the ten houses. Where you could not find their house address numbers. And I still have that letter. I'll 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 send it into our village manager. But um, that's something that the village, that are um, three members from the the um fire board. Could make sure, you know, we do on a regular basis, um, meet those standards and have those pro- prominent as they should be.
Uh, do we have any other comments on for the fire board members?
Parker, I just want to make a quick, very, very, very quick. First of all, full disclosure, when I was a a young boy. I always wanted to be a fireperson, uh, fireman. So uh, there's a lot of bias in my statements of how this may come out, but uh. And here I am, so who knows? Uh, the other thing, just a quick follow-up, um. You know, maybe it would be helpful, if not already, I'm sure we could work with you and help, uh, you know, work with you and Natalie. But if there's a, like a position description of this, and if we could send it out, we could probably actively recruit, which would be awesome. Um, because I would expect there'd be quite a few folks who'd be interested. And then the other thing, just mentioning, I mean, obviously, the visit. Um because I would expect there'd be quite a few folks who'd be interested. And then the other thing, just mentioning, I mean, obviously the visit. For adults, I think would be very helpful, especially it's a if it's a serious, you know, going through what they do hazmat, but. I think personally. That there's probably a lot of kids in the neighborhood that would really love. Do a walkthrough, right?
The twenty eighth of October, we had an open house and we had hundreds of kids and 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 adults there. And uh that was one of the biggest, it was a beautiful day.
We've done that, but you know, the ideas we can we can like work in.
Got a good crew. We meet uh monthly. With the captain, with the captain of the station and we go over all of his. Uh you know, his report here that I have a copy of and I can provide it to you if you'd like to. It's interesting on on and the calls that we have and the addresses and so forth. We've had several uh suicides unfortunately. Uh that they they also have to go to. But basically, uh the people are there and they're available, they're trained, uh they're servicing you and uh. And you've made our 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 uh uh presence. Possible to to meet with them and tell them if you have any problems, you can go through us or go directly to them, so.
Regarding the open seat, I do recall this, this was at the April C E C meeting last year. That um one of the members of the C E C did um show some interest in the open seat and was Phil Hurst. But he's already serving on two counties. I don't know if he's still interested, but I do remember he did.
Just one last final thing, uh and I promise very quick and follow up administratively, but I just want to balance out what you've shared about. We have nothing to worry about with the fire hydrants and then our. Beloved Larry, who again, you know, bringing up the the the. Just the experience that some haven't worked and I'm just wondering, is there like? Actually qualitative, I mean quantitative. Data, like do they provide a report that says that they have looked at all these fire hydrants and checked it? Just so that we don't have to take it on word, but actually unreal data.
No, no, that W S S C does. Michael, do you want to respond to that? We just met with them at Delfield and and Thorn Apple.
Right.
And we, they tested one fire hydrant right in front of us, um but they test every single fire hydrant um every other year.
Okay.
Uh and this next summer will be when they'll come through and test. Um Larry's complaint is that it that's not a complete test, they don't actually run all the fire hydrants at the same time.
That's not what I said, Michael.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to miscall you.
There is, there is a published N F P A protocol. It's not mine. And it's followed by the the uh the county fire department. Of how you test and flush. Your fire hydrants. And you need to have two running to do it properly. And and showing a couple of people that water comes out of the fire hydrant. Does not mean that if it takes forty five minutes of a volume and pressure of water to put out a fire. That that hydrant would do it. It takes a serious test and there's a and it takes about. An hour and fifteen minutes to do it properly. And I go around and look. And if you look at them, you'll see the paint on them has not been disturbed in years. I checked. They're not being looked at the the way you claim. And when I've asked to actually see the logs and the facts of when they occurred. Nobody will provide them.
So let's take this offline, but let's follow up. If if there is a cycle that's occurring. Then let's just follow up and 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 have that information.
Okay, well, I see Marty.
Yes, thank you. I really appreciate discussion and Paul and Natalie, thank you so much for serving on the fireboard and Larry, thank you for your service. Two quick questions. One was about the data. On not only when the hydrants are checked, but how they are actually tested, which Larry just addressed. And I really think we need data on that. And you know, I remember the house burning down on Taylor because the hydrant didn't work. That was about fifteen years ago. The second question I have is is for the village. Which is whose responsibility is it to clear the foliage and shrubbery in the in the right of way to make sure the hydrants are visible? The uh Paul, you mentioned, you know, being hard to find when a car is parked in front of them, they're impossible to find when a bush is overgrown them. I don't believe, I mean, tell me if I'm wrong, that that's the homeowner's responsibility, although if there was one on mine, I'd certainly keep it clipped. But I think that's in the village right of way and and I guess Michael, this is a question for you. The village be clearing that?
It is the homeowner's responsibility to take care of the shrubbery in front of their houses in the public right of way. And if not, then then we will take care of it and make sure those are clear. So if you have a fire hydrant that you're concerned about, let me know and I'll come clear it. And also about the snow piling up around it, we did write into the snow plowing contract this year. To clean around the fire hydrants. That was actually Lynn Welly's suggestion, um so we we added that to the contract.
Thank you, because there was a time when we had snow so deep that uh. We had a an incident, I guess it was a hazmat leak on Chestnut and the snow was so deep. That uh they couldn't find the hydrant. I knew where it was and I ran down the street and got my shovel and dug it out so they could find the stick. Actually, that's when the poles first went up was when we couldn't find that hydrant on Chestnut.
Thank Marty, uh Susan has her hand up.
Yeah, real quickly, does the village paint the curb right in front of the fire hydrants to make sure that? Nobody parks there or if they don't, maybe we could or maybe you do already. But that that's useful um just to paint, you know, three to five feet or whatever it is. And then the other thing was, is there much pressure on the fire department to get developed? You talked about the library next door. To the fire department might get torn down and rebuilt and it would remain on the first floor. I'm just curious. Is that gonna be the same pressure on you all at the fire department to do something with your property? It wasn't clear to me if that meant the fire department was also gonna.
You're not gonna put apartments up over the firehouse. Okay, that's not happening.
We we own that uh the fire department is on, so you don't have to worry about that, but it's the one next door with the county owns. And we stopped that, by the way, but that was that was gonna go with. Uh but what, uh so we were able to stop that this past year. Uh with a six story building.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, both of you, and we hope. What's the answer on the yellow paint?
Yellow paint is nonenforceable, it doesn't mean anything. You're not allowed to park within fifteen feet of a fire hydrant and people do it anyways, but we don't have parking enforcement. At this time. We need parking enforcement.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on. Managers report. Michael.
Okay, managers report, I have a. I have ten points for you today in my manager's report and I fit it on one page.
Oh, good.
So we're gonna keep this moving fast. Um I noted my travel schedule for the next week for the holidays, but I will be here all of uh December, so. And Aaron will be in the in the office when I'm not, so. Sorry, I'm just waiting a second for it to quiet down the room.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, my second point is. That I'm. Suggesting we move the December council meeting up by one week to December fourteenth. That accommodates um trap uh holiday travel schedules and that sort of thing. And it also allows for more than thirty days betw- between the December meeting and the January meeting. Which we will need because of the election plan, so if you all are available on the fourteenth, we can just agree to move that up.
Everybody, okay, let it be known that we will move that. Meeting forward a week.
Okay, third point is the audit is complete. The auditor will report to us either at the December or the January meeting, so that's coming. As of today, I'm recommending that we go with the compost crew uh recommendation or proposal for. Free composting to everyone in the village that wants it. There's about seventy people that currently compost in the village. We got two proposals from my R F P that I posted from Veteran Compost and Compost Crew. Compost Crew is not only the one we already use, they're also five dollars cheaper per month per household, so.
May I ask whether compost crew has a sliding scale based on the number of households? It didn't look in their proposal as if they still offer that.
Speak up, Susan, I can't hear you.
Sorry, um compost crew used to offer lower. Rates per household depending on the number of people enrolled in the program and in the most recent proposal. It seemed that it was a flat rate. Apparently it is, unfortunately, because I think we'll probably have some blue numbers that enrollings.
Is, can I ask a question on the enrollment? If you don't enroll right at the the start, you change your mind half half year and you're still able to enroll? Or for newcomers that arrive?
Everyone will still sign up individually to answer your question first, Andrew. Um everyone will still sign up individually, still have their login, we'll just cover the bill. Um you can join or cancel at any time. They'll recognize that you're in the village and you'll get. Our rate and we'll pay for it. The. It's true that Veteran Compost has a sliding scale, the more houses you have, the cheaper it becomes. But even at their cheapest rate, it's still five dollars more expensive. Oh, okay, from from the proposal they they have given me, that was in last month's packet. It's nineteen dollars a month and then if you want a larger bucket.
Yeah.
Um there's it's seven extra dollars for the larger bucket. And and there's an option, we can either cover that seven dollars for people that want a larger bucket or we can pass that on to them and they help, we'll just pay seven dollars a month and we'll pay the first nineteen. So that's an option point. I would say let's just. Pay for all of it um and make it simple.
Yeah, it's either or.
Because if people are generating that much.
That's good. And and as I'm sure you all know, they also do offer um compost in return, so you can go pick up every spring, you can pick up your compost. Arthur was good enough to take me out there, it's an incredible operation and um. Well, we 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 don't take back, goes directly into One Acre Farm um out past Bullsville, so. It's going directly back into a local local food creation, so.
Well, they're awesome.
Oh, nice. Okay, so that's uh point number four. Under maintenance, uh leaf acumen is already happening approximately every other week. Through the end of the year. I'm also going to recommend that they come back and do one additional street sweeping in the spring. I noticed this year that there was some spring. Pollen and those types of things that made the streets pretty dirty, especially for the cyclists. Um so hopefully we can, we can get that done in the spring as well.
Comments, well, a number of the comments in the survey was that people would like to have better heads up. When they're coming. Do you have information on that you could put out an alert? They're coming tomorrow morning or something?
I do put out alerts and it's in the wrap up when it's coming out, um. I'm not sure if you need additional communications. Sometimes it's not clear what streets they will be through, so they start on the south end on Monday. And then they move north, they try to complete it. So the first time that they did this year, they completed the entire village in one day. Uh the second time they completed in two days and normally it takes three days though, um depending on how many. Staff members they bring out. Um I do send emails and I do get. Quite a few complaints that someone's pile was missed or something happened and I even was making calls and going and documenting some of those missed piles and they came back. Uh this last time last week to pick up some additional piles, um. So so they are responsive and um yeah, it's it's been easy to work with them, so. Yep, happy to communicate more if if that's needed.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Um and we are distributing leaf bags again this year, but we're doing it slightly differently. First of all, we're discouraging leaf bags.
Swing your camera around to show the pile of leaf bags back there.
Behind Keith there.
Yeah.
Um if you need leaf bags, request them from me. There's a form online, you can request them on there and I will see it. Uh until that pile of leaf bags is gone. Otherwise, you can come by the office and pick them up yourself. I'm just tracking all the data this year, so I know how many you're using. Um, okay, under special projects. Uh the survey of Brookville Road, this is for the sidewalk, the site survey that we had hired an engineer to complete. Is now complete. Um I updated the council with. That survey, sorry, it's very, very technical and there's even a more technical um engineering. Software doc database that they are ready to transfer to the next engineer, which is the next step. We need to hire an engineer. To actually design the sidewalk, so they will be ready to transfer all of those data points, all those images, all of the measurements. To the engineering firm that will design the actual sidewalk. My proposal is to have a draft design and then actually hold a public. Um listing session or discussion about that draft design form, whatever we're calling these things these days. Um to just to look at that. I know there's seventeen houses along. Brookville Road along that sidewalk. So all of those people and I've talked to several of those residents have, you know, questions or specific concerns or or wish lists items. Um so we want to make sure all those are addressed in addressed, but then also everyone else as well. This is a. Gonna be a very large project, so we want to make sure everyone gets their their voice heard. Um and then we will get a finalized plan and then we'll get the state to sign off one more time on it. Also for the sidewalk, for the crosswalk at Brookville and Bradley, we have. Two engineering firms that have both recommended a crosswalk at Bradley across Brookville. Though they do have some slight differences in their recommendations. It's the north side of the intersection. In the first proposal from the traffic group and then it's in the middle between the two Bradleys in for Joe Cutro's proposal that actually. Cuts, well, they're not, the Bradley doesn't line up perfectly, so. It's actually recommended to put it between the two.
Oh.
Um that way, yeah, anyways, there's there are all sorts of, there's all sorts of arguments about it and I I can draw it better and actually. The manager of Chevy Chase Village uh emailed me asking me about it because she saw it in our newsletter, um Shayna Cook. And I I explained it to her and. In detail and actually started drawing on a Google map for her, um so I'm happy to do that for everybody and explain the options there, but. So that is also moving forward as well.
What about the other walkability one recommendations, the curb extensions? What's happening if anything?
We have to go back to we that they kind of got dropped, but I think we should go back to that.
Susan, Susan, it's very difficult to hear you. You need to speak up.
Very sorry, I was asking about the walkability one recommendations. And where we are on curb extensions, Arthur said. Uh to his great credit, we need to go back and look at that because Cummings, this is my opinion. Cummings is still a crazy cut through.
Yeah.
And we really need to address.
They, the walkability studies had several recommendations, one was speed bumps, which we put in. And that was intended to slow traffic and deter. Uh cut through traffic, we're, I'm not sure whether that had an effect. The other was. Curb extensions, that's what they're called, where you have to kind of squeeze into the street, you just can't go barreling in. Uh again, intending to slow traffic and discourage through traffic, we want to go fast. We, that was under active discussion uh until after the speed bumps, we kind of dropped it. We lost ball.
And there was also a stormwater runoff issue as far as.
Taylor Street.
Uh yeah, but I mean, as far as the curb extension, they're trying to integrate some sort of. Stormwater device into the perfect sentence to maximize their.
So I just following up on what Michael said about the. The next serve uh engineering, now what's the next, the phrase of the next stage?
Design engineer.
Design and engineering. Uh and then. Actually building it, I've already written two reports for the uh we for the monthly wrap up about. Why do things take so long? I'm afraid I'm gonna have to do a third chapter using exactly the same example. Stuff happens, but you just have to go through it step by step. Okay, Michael, get on.
And uh Susan, that's a good point about the curb extensions. I'll look back at that. That was again before my time, so I I was never tasked with really. Completing that or taking that on, but I'm happy to look into it and um the other traffic thing that we didn't mention was the. That dead end of Quincy and widening the dead end of Quincy, that was the big. Priority that was communicated to me when I first started here a year ago, um so then that one is complete. Right, so um moving on, eight of ten points is the right of way. And private tree plantings will be happening the week after Thanksgiving, so that is that is confirmed. And I will announce it today, but then also communicate with the with the various um people involved. Under ten, there is a variance request that is finally ready to go. There's been some back and forth, but it's ready to go for thirty four twelve Taylor, the house with the sandbags. That is being scheduled as we speak. I just need two council members to confirm that December twelfth works for that. Susan and Andrew. December twelfth.
I'm gonna be away from the eleven through fourteen, but I think I can tune in.
Oh, yeah, it's it's on Zoom. If that's okay.
Uh it'll be an hour or two.
What time is it?
During, so it'll be no more than two hours.
I was thinking seven P M on the twelfth.
Okay.
No more than two hours, no way, yeah. Okay, great, thank you. That's um uh I we want to do it as soon as possible and we have to give twenty days notice to all of the adjacent neighbors. According to the code, so. Moving forward with that variance request, that's our, that's my first variance request, so. Yeah, it's kind of super exciting. An unper, an unpermitted shed has been constructed at thirty-five twenty-three Bradley Lane. That shed is in the side yard setback and is too close to the front property line, it appears. I have issued multiple warnings that have not been responded to, and as of today, we've actually issued a letter that we staked in their front yard. So they can't miss it, um, we went over there several times and kind of catch them, so we are trying to enforce the code. Here's a perfect example of someone doing something without our permission and, um, we're gonna make them move it, so. That concludes my report, thank you for your attention.
Good, thank you, um, just wanna quick, 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 first of all, just really bravo. To Michael and recognizing just a few days ago was his one year anniversary, so bravo, that's really.
Uh, awesome, and then just part of that, we recognize that probably ninety percent or more of your job and responsibilities. Are folks calling in perhaps with an issue or a problem, and you don't really get a whole heck of a lot of the positive praise, but we do appreciate it, so.
Thank you. Okay, and next thing on the agenda is to approve the minutes from our last meeting. October nineteenth, everybody has had a chance to review that, I will move to approve the meeting. The minutes of the October nineteenth meeting. Second that, everyone likes the meeting, the minutes, everyone likes it, say aye.
I am actually not gonna approve them, and I promise I will make this short, this is not to be grandizing or anything. And I do want to say before I share this comment, I just want to share that this is again, looking at everyone on the council. You know, full respect to all of them, so this is just a, a comment in terms of, we don't always agree on things and I want to share. So I just want to put forth, and it's in the meeting minutes actually, where Arthur and I had a discussion on the survey. And I had acknowledged to residents that we would be going through the survey questions. And I presented some of those questions actually in open meeting and that we were going into a closed session that was going to be administrative. That would have been what I considered normative and perfunctory around just reviewing survey questions as a council. And to go through any nuances, the meeting was closed. I'm sorry, the open meeting was closed and then we went into this closed session. In the closed session, I have been informed that the chair and the manager had spoken or had some interaction. With our legal counsel stating that we could not have a discussion in closed session. And that this actually needed to be done in open session. So I'm only sharing this again, this is not about trying to create a kerfluffle and to, but I'm sharing why I am objecting to the minutes. Because in the discussion in the meeting, I said very clearly to residents, we'd be going into administrative discussion. To actually review the questions on the survey, which is normative, if, actually, if I reflect back when Susan had been chair. We had a wonderful session where Katia had ran it and we spent forty-five minutes, we had gone through it. And as we know, for a month, I had been asking to have that same sort of session, so I was, I was surprised. And with that said, I just want to share, I'll follow up, not here, but I do want to follow up on a couple things. One, I think it's very clear, I had shared certain questions in open meeting and it stated to everyone in an open meeting. We were gonna be doing this, so I, I still am a little bit befuddled about how I was unable to discuss questions that we had presented in open meeting. In a closed meeting, because that is a very routine function to be able to do that. Two, I think it also gets to rules of engaging the attorney, the idea that we were in an open meeting, okay? And there were some folks who knew that they had consulted with the attorney and, and were given advice that we could not discuss this in a closed meeting. And I had gone through actually the preparations to talk about it in open meeting. I really fair feel it would have been a fair point to raise it at that time, that there had been some advice that had been received saying. You know what, folks, by the way, we can't disclose it in or talk about it in a closed meeting because it has to be discussed in open. Now, I'm just putting it out there, this is not to be controversial, curmudgeon, I'm just saying, you know, it would have been probably in hindsight. Now, given the fact that that meeting was happening at eleven thirty at night, because we'd already been in session for hours. Again, I just want to say that this is not, you know, overly finger pointing. And then, you know, I do think, and this will be coming up and very briefly is, how does this apply to the survey? What exactly was it about the survey and the questions, even though they were presented in open meeting? That there would have been advice given by our attorney saying you can't discuss that in closed meeting. Because that is also a little befuddling to me, so when that said, I'm gonna suggest that perhaps this is something we take offline, maybe it's written up. And it's just shared, because again, I just have questions, so that I, I turn it over and, you know, move on.
Okay, moving on, um, committee reports. We have election committee, I have a very brief report on the water committee, but why don't we do elections first?
Thank you very much, hi, this is Marty, and, uh, we've also got John Shero here and, and, uh. Um, I think I just want to start by saying, you know, thank you to Katie Howard, our liaison, who's been tremendously helpful. Did a very short report for you guys, um, for our election committee report. Uh, we've had our third and fourth meetings, we're well on the way to consolidating the five election documents from last year into a single overall ordinance. As we promised we would, and also as we promised, we're using the twenty twenty-three election procedures as the basis. We're replacing those dates with the generic provisions to make the procedures a standing long-term ordinance. So the council committee will not have to develop a new election ordinance every single year. Excuse me, we will have the updated overall ordinance ready to present to the council on schedule. Uh, before the next council meeting on December fourteenth, and thank you, by the way, for doing the council meeting on the fourteenth, because that will help the election committee. To move this cycle forward on schedule. I want to just say we've been very transparent, we've really been careful to make sure we have residents' participation, welcome at every meeting. Markups of the documents in the public packets before the meeting, the recordings and, and some very detailed minutes on the V M A website. We voted at the last meeting on the thirteenth, a couple of days ago, to, uh, go section by section through the draft, working, the working draft of the ordinance. And, uh, we've got that approved, I mean, it's really been an, an incredible amount of work by the committee, I cannot sing their praises high enough. We will vote on the final complete document shortly after Thanksgiving. Um, and I guess as I said, presented before the, the meeting, so you all have time to look at it before the December fourteenth meeting. And we'll be glad to answer any questions you have in the meantime, so email anytime, um, or just call me. The, the election ordinance, we think, the, I'm speaking for the committee here, should be like a cookbook from now on. Once we have all the standard procedures in one place, um, the future committees can just set the election dates and carry out the provisions. No different than making spaghetti, um, it's just, it should be that simple and that clear. Now, it's a complex process, but if each step is clear, it's, it, it is gonna be such a, so much easier in the future. We do have a very specific request for the council tonight, in the packet at this council meeting are two documents from us. One is an R F P and the other is a one pager on specifications. For a short-term contractor to assist with the task of verifying the voter roll. And I want to take a minute to, to thank Ron Bolt, our attorney, for his help in preparing the R F P. Uh, he gave us some very helpful language, um, that he added to our draft. Pointing out that, that the village needs to be very thorough about verifying the twenty twenty-four voter roll for two reasons. One, because of the council's adoption of a new definition of qualified voters. And second, because of the importance of having really accurate, up-to-date voter rolls for male vote elections. It's really such a, a key part of the election, if your, if your voter roll is not accurate. You know, the, the validity of the, of the election can be called into question, and we certainly don't ever want that. So we are committed to doing that really thorough review this year and we need help. The entire committee has talked about this several times now, and we are universally of the opinion that we need some assistance to do that kind of thorough review. And in, implement the council's adoption of the new definition of qualified voters. Um, Arthur, I know I sent you and Katie some background information on this, happy to answer any questions, but please, we're asking the council tonight. To approve the R F P, so the village manager can post the announcement as soon as possible, because to keep the election cycle on schedule. The voter roll verification process has to begin in about six weeks, so open to question, short report, but we are doing a lot of work. So please, happy to talk to you about any questions you may have.
Before, um, the council asks questions, I have prepared a very, very brief statement for the election committee, if I might. Please tell me if you can all hear me.
Yep, we can hear you.
Um, so honestly, um, it saddens me to be here this evening as it's simultaneously the opening night for my daughter Hannah. And the B C C High School Theater's fall play. However, this elected volunteer position sometimes requires sacrifices and I'm not complaining. I would just appreciate. That my council colleagues and residents know that I'm making one tonight. Because attending and casting votes at monthly council meetings is our, you know, ultimate responsibility as elected officials. So furthermore, as a council member and liaison to this year's election committee. I have a responsibility to be here tonight to relay my support for requests that will be made by the election committee members. The election committee's mission is to include every valid V M A voter on the annual voter roll. I'm not inferring that that wasn't also the goal of past election committees. But this year's request entails enlisting the help of an individual or service contractor that has the time to do a deeper dive. Into developing the most accurate voter roll numbers to date. Arthur attended the last election committee meeting earlier this week and stated that I should be prepared to make my arguments tonight. Quite frankly, if I didn't believe in this committee and its mission and this request to ensure the most accurate voter roll. Then I wouldn't be here tonight because I would have sat this meeting out to be on the front row supporting my daughter. The concerning issue is this, last year, there was a total of seven hundred forty-seven V M A qualified voters. But in previous years, the numbers ranged six hundred twenty to six hundred thirty. The election committee has also expressed concerns with the updated definition of a qualified voter in the village charter. And code of ordinances and feels this temporary position, uh, will help decipher that scope as well. The committee is ideally seeking temporary help between the months of January to March. For a contractor to produce a complete, accurate annotated document of verified qualified voters. In Village of Martin's addition, the election committee has created a request for proposal and replied, relied upon a template of previously posted R F Ps. On the V M A website, I further asked our attorney Ron Bolt to review with Arthur and Michael's permission and guidance. I know the counter arguments will entail, why now? What's the purpose and this has never been done before in the V M A, in a V M A election? And to be clear, this isn't an opportunity to challenge past election results or election committee members. It's really an attempt at an audit to provide our cleanest, most accurate, up-to-date role as possible. The last few years alone have seen significant movement in the V M A of residents coming and going and newly built homes. Some of late that are rather ginormous, they could probably fit a family of ten, including qualified voters. My point is, our neighborhood and V M A streets change with each season. Which is why I am supportive of this goal to create the most accurate voter roll of residents. I believe this request will help us to do so, we owe this to our community. I hope my colleagues will also consider supporting the committee's request, and to Hannah, I'm sorry I couldn't be there, break a leg.
Thank you, thank you Katie, and thank you for being here. Uh, I was initially quite skeptical and suspicious of this proposal. Had all kinds of, of bad thoughts in my mind about why it was happening, I'm now satisfied, it's a legitimate request. And, and actually can be quite positive in reviewing the sources of our information and, uh. Satisfying various kinds of conflicts that come up when we can try to, uh, adjudicate different lists that come up from different sources. So I, I support going forward with it, but I want to hear any of the other colleagues. You, you like that, Susan?
Um, well, I think recognizing that it will not be current shortly after it's. Um, I think if we all agree that it is not, I mean, you, you suggested that's the reason. That the reason for doing it is not to impugn any previous, um, voter rolls.
I can quote, can, Marty, I'm going to quote you on this, that she, uh, when I questioned this, she thinks that last year's voter roll. Was probably the most accurate and fully, full, fully developed one that we've had.
I think it's good, I think it's a kind of a gut check, um, and, and why not? Why would we, why would we stand against it, just to, just to see how we're doing, which I think we've done quite well, in the systems that are in place. But it, it, it'd be good to have an independent audit to see how well we're doing, and I think it's gonna hopefully show. That, uh, we've captured folks that have not been captured in the past.
And perhaps we'll capture more in this.
And the two faces, like the two pieces of information they'll be using is my, is the twenty twenty-three roll. And Michael's most up-to-date list of residents, I mean, that's the, the base information, but, you know.
And the county is voter.
And the, the problem is that as the county itself, officials acknowledge that the county roles are inaccurate.
They are.
Uh, and so if, when you start off with that basis, we, we generate problems, Doug, you have any comment?
Uh, just real briefly, um, first of all, Katie, thank you for that very cogent, beautiful, uh, opening. And, uh, I, I, I hope to emulate that sometime, if I ever have to do the same, it was really well done. Um, except I hope I don't have to miss one of Rosie's plays, but that's a whole other thing. I just want to, uh, so from the possibility, I guess, wearing the treasurer hat. So the budgeting and all of that, is that something that we have to, as like a super majority? You know, I just want to make sure that we, we handle that, because it wasn't something that had been in the actual budget.
No, we have, there is a budget for the election process.
Okay, so if it's there.
Yeah, if we go over, then you can raise it later.
And, and the only other thing I say, again, I think this is in the spirit of what I've heard. Is I know that there has been, you know, not here necessarily, but other communities where a process such as this raises concerns. About trying to kick people off, right? And to minimize or all that, and from every single thing that I've heard, council, committee, residents. That anything I've heard about this has been the entire opposite, this is about really bringing people together and being as expansive as possible. So absolutely, two thumbs up.
And Ron will tell you that kicking people off is one of the most onerous processes that the state has mandated. Uh, so it's, it's a challenge. Okay, so I guess the council approves this, Marty.
Thank you very much, Arthur and all of you. And a quick thing, I just want to say, yep, I think that we will really end up with a product that will be, uh, a base. I think going forward for a clean voter roll, and I take Ron's point very much to heart, that when you're doing male vote elections. You really have to have an accurate, up-to-date voter roll every year, because everybody in that list gets a ballot. And it's actually unlawful to give people who don't live here a ballot, so the cleanup. And Ron has been tremendously helpful, again, all of you, Katie, thank you for that beautiful statement, that was lovely and much appreciated.
Okay, uh, so let us take a, a formal vote on, uh, this, uh, putting off this R F P for a contract for a person to do this. So I will, uh, propose this, propose a motion that we do this. And we, you, you will second that? We have a vote on it?
We, what, I just, Ron, you, you look like you are poised to say something, I just wasn't sure if there's something that we were gonna do that you wanted to.
Yeah, I, I think it's been said already, but thi- this is a motion to authorize the issuance of the R F P. As Michael said, once the proposals come in, the council will have to determine whether there's existing funds in the budget. And if not, to possibly amend the budget by super majority vote.
Good, thank you, thank you, okay, all in favor? Okay, good, good to go, okay, next, is Naomi here? Is, do we have an?
Yes, I'm here.
What's that?
I'm here.
Oh, oh, go, I'm sorry, Naomi Keith is about to run out, so here's the community engagement.
For the, uh, community engagement committee, we've had a very successful event. On how far the hell we break, we, we have all people with the head count that we've ever had. And, uh, we're gonna have a holiday celebration next month for everybody. And, uh, we're gonna have a holiday celebration next month for everybody. And then the big affair is gonna be at the LaFerm in March. So we're, we're really excited about that. And, uh, very quickly, Larry was talking about that fire in the house that burned down on Summit Avenue. Of a few years ago, that was actually thirty years ago this past July, the hottest July ever on record up to that point. And what was the other thing I wanted to mention?
Wait, wait, before, before you leave, while you're still thinking. Uh, among the many suggestions for events, we'll get, we'll give you those suggestions to you, we're block parties. So put that in your hat.
Okay. And, and the CPR is something that. Uh, Chief Esch of Bethesda Fire Montgomery County Fire can do here, because we talked about that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for Keith.
Keith, don't go.
Hi Keith, you said you, you're planning a holiday event. What does that mean?
December event.
A December event, yes.
Holiday, holiday, which holiday?
Holidays, it's not a holiday, it's a December. I, I'm the liaison to the.
A winter event.
It is a winter event, just a lantern walk.
Thank you, Susan.
Nothing holiday-ish.
We don't want holidays.
Yeah, my quick comment as you're running out, I just wanna share, uh, we all know, while Arthur shared comments. In general, I don't think it's a surprise that there's overwhelming. Love for, for the committee and the events and all of that from the survey and.
We all love you guys too.
Okay, Naomi.
Okay, so, um. I want to ask the committee to consider a scope of work that I submitted. Uh, uh, all too late. It's not very long, based on the mission statement that was issued to us a while ago. And as you can see, I quoted the various pieces. Of the mission statement and the plan that we have with respect to each piece. There's nothing controversial there. I have removed any mention of a Hanukkah party. It was made pretty clear to us that that was going to be. All too religious and all too controversial. So the one event at the moment that we're planning. Is a education and training program that we're hoping to present. With, uh, the American Jewish Committee that does this for breakfast, lunch and dinner. And we're as a committee, as a task force, I should say, going to hear them. On, uh, November twenty-seventh, their proposal. And we will decide, we will approve or not, a program that they will offer on a hybrid. Mostly Zoom because. I have since touched base with the other ten municipalities that have signed on to the county's resolution. To combat antisemitism. And I've contacted all ten of them and I've heard back from three and they've said. We haven't done a thing, we're just waiting for some cues, we're waiting for somebody to help us organize something. And they said, if you're organizing something, then we will come on board. So, for example, the town of Chevy Chase, Friendship Heights and, um, Garrett Park. Are all interested in joining forces and propose, um. Uh, marketing of this event, if we wanna make it a larger. Community-wide program because it can be offered on Zoom. So I'm in touch with a very, one of the professional, twenty professionals. Who have, uh, who has been involved with actually President Biden's. Initiative on antisemitism. You should note that. I should note that he's the only and first president that ever addressed this head-on antisemitism. Uh, he's, uh, developed an initiative and that's where the county took its cue. And that's where I believe V M A took its cue, but at least the other municipalities did. So the whole idea, of course, is to trickle it down at the community level. And if there's enough interest in this event that we can offer, I'm hoping soon. Because of the urgency of the issue. Otherwise, the holidays get in the way and then we'd have to wait till January. Then we might do a much bigger event. Where we might invite Raskin, Representative Raskin or, uh, Emhoff, Vice President's. Husband Emhoff, et cetera. But for the moment, what we wanna propose is an education and training program. For the village and neighboring municipalities. Everything else is pretty pro forma in this scope of work. Uh, sharing resources is one of those and I've already started doing that on a page that. The task force has been established, has established as well as weekly wrap-ups. They will keep coming. Uh, there are wonderful, rich resources coming our way. And, uh, otherwise, it's all pro forma. So what I'm asking the task force to do is to vote on this scope of work so we can go ahead with our work.
Well, Naomi, I think I went over a person myself and commend you for it. It looks, it looks very solid to me. Any other comments about anybody?
Does it require?
I don't think we require a vote of approval.
No, they have the mission statement.
Yeah, you have the mission. This looks solid unless anybody has any questions. No, no, I'm getting nods from around the table. Naomi, you're good to go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bravo.
Okay, um, any other committees out there? Well, I have the water committee met and there's just one thing to report from them. Uh, there is a University of Maryland kind of extension course. On water issues of the kind we're facing and it's a one-day session. Uh, for, it would be for the members of the committee and council members, the manager, whoever wants to attend. It's fifty-five dollars a person, a minimum of ten people. So there would be five hundred fifty dollars, we could accommodate ten people. Uh, and, uh, Gene Spurling is trying to organize that right now. I'm gonna, I get a date and time for that. It would be roughly a six-hour Zoom session.
Gene is on the call and I would absolutely want to join that if that happens.
Okay. Oh, Gene, are you there? If you want to have anything to say on that?
Um, yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Uh, it's not gonna happen as soon as we wanted it to. I've spoken to the professor. It's actually the University of Maryland's M T two center and, um. Uh, but it, it will happen. One of the things she has recommended to the committee. Is that we need to find out what we have here. And as a matter of fact, Larry Wasson is. Already volunteered to help me, uh, uncover what lies beneath. So the University of Maryland has suggested that that's where we start. But, uh, but the, uh, but I, I, I fully embrace and support you guys setting aside some. Um, appropriations for us for education purposes, because if it's not this organization. It's certainly going to be, although I think it will be them because they're very good. Um, we're gonna need some educational, um, support. So please, I encourage, I appreciate if you guys would go ahead and say yes, we're going to set aside some money. And of course, when, when it's actually formally set up, we'll come back and make sure we have your formal approval.
Thank you, Jane. I could say that Jane and I attended a road repair, repaving. All-day session at, over at the University of Maryland and I have never looked at roads the same since.
I recently took a drainage, it retook the drainage class.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm up to snuff.
Thank you. Uh, okay, committees. Okay, time for the survey discussion. Uh, Jeff, do you want to kick us off on that?
Um, I'd be happy to. I mean, I put together a few slides, so it's really up to how others wanna kind of. Okay, I'd be, I'd be delighted to bear with me.
And for the people who complained about the question and who wrote that thing, when I reread it. Weeks after I wrote it, I said, who wrote this?
Arthur, I think you're too hard on yourself because actually you did have a lot of weigh-ins.
Yeah, we did. We had, uh, we had council support, but it still could have used some better editing, better editing.
Okay, we're getting there, I promise. Now we just do. They have this, this, uh, getting there, I promise you all. I wanna get to that view that everyone can see it. We'll try it one more time.
Slide show.
Ah, there we go. Perfect. Okay. So, uh, I promised to try and go through this as, as quickly as possible, recognizing that. These will be available to everyone and everyone will be able to absorb it further. So, of course, just putting out there, I think we all love the data, a couple of the, the, the quotes that I love most. You know, in God we trust, all others must, you know, look at the data. Uh, wait, let me just move this. Torture the data and we'll confess to everything. I think we'll see that tonight in a lot of ways. If we have data, let's look at the data. All we have are opinion, let's go with mine. I think, uh, five council members, we all kinda have that thought too. And then, of course, errors using inadequate data are much less than those using no data at all. I think we recognize that this is imperfect and that. We're here to use it to help us inform with decisions, but we recognize and we'll see in the methods that. It ain't the, it ain't the, the, the holy grail and that, uh, we'll continue to make decisions on other pieces of information input. So just in terms of the sampling and the methods, I think it's just good to see. Uh, uh, everything is consistent with what we've seen in past years and I just want to acknowledge Michael, Aaron. Arthur, uh, the entire council. I mean, the, we had the, I think, the strongest response we've ever had in terms of, of the number of surveys that we have completed. And, uh, the, I, who won the actual, uh, let's see, Bradley. This year were the winners. Yeah, so there you go. Uh, and then just putting a couple of things out in terms of the sampling frame, because it's important of just how we look at this, right? So again, all testaments to Michael, Aaron and everyone else, so we had about five hundred eighty-one emails sent using Constant Contact. Sixteen were hand-delivered, so that gives us a response rate of roughly twenty-nine point nine percent. The one seventy-three over fifty, five ninety-seven. So putting it in the context, I think what everyone recognizes, when you do kind of this type of survey. Literally, if you get over fifteen percent, people call that a win. So I mean, we are definitely within the solid normative. Higher or good response rate on this sort of thing, but of course, we always love to do better. And this is about the three hundred thirty taxable income households. And then the voter roll, which we just talked about, seven hundred forty-seven. So again, the questions that you ask and it's more rhetorical for us to just continue to think about this for the future is. What's our goal? Is it households or individuals? Because then that dramatically changes. The, you could say you almost had fifty percent or more versus, you know, this low. So again, it's just a thought. Who are we missing and why? I think that's also the idea that you had five hundred eighty-one emails on Constant Contact. But we say we have a voter roll of seven forty-seven. That's a hundred and sixty-six folks. And so again, it's just questions that perhaps we'll get into as we go along, but I think it's really good ones for us to, to look into. We already talked about the sampling frame and then, you know, you, I mean, look, it, it's. You've got that sort of segment and, but you know, is there parental consent and all that? But anyway, that's getting into the, the too much. Designs, again, I think we, we commend Arthur, the council, everyone. There was a lot of time spent put into this. There's no question, lots of feedback. Um, and again, Arthur reached out like within the first or second week of September. And, which is, I think, ahead of the curve in a lot of cases and shared and sent an email and said, Jeff, you know, could you look at this and. Do whatever it is that you do in terms of helping to strengthen. And I have to say, he took up ninety percent or more. In terms of the item responses. So again, bravo, kudos. You know, I, I wouldn't wanna call this, I, I have to frame it, not so good, but just other things which I would like to see going forward personally at least. I think we really would like the, the resident and committee input was, was a bit limited. And again, with a lot of things going on, there may be good reasons for that. But at the same time, I would really like to see how we go forward to say, you know what? Let's involve our committee members, let's involve.
Jeff, I would, I would like to raise a question about that. I'm glad you brought this up. And, and so the question is, who's the survey for? Is it for the residents, for the community or for the council? Um, and. So that was a, that I, and I went right, well, right from the first it was suggested by Katja. It was to inform the council in our, in our decision-making roles here. Uh, and so given that goal, then the question is. Where, you know, where do you go for the, for the input in what the questions are? But that, so this is a question, I'm not saying that's the answer, but this was a, a, an assumption that we had. Motivating it to begin with.
Fair enough. And in good faith, I, look, like I said, I believe Arthur deserves a platinum chair on the council. Uh, for a lot of things of, of just, you know, what he brings to it. But again, this is just a, an area where we, I don't know if you can say disagreement, it's just the idea of, I, I appreciate what you're saying. But this, there's a slide I have in the back that says unused slides, but if you look at like Rand Corporation. You know, the Hugh Trust, like the real gold standards of folks who do research. The idea is you wanna collect information and have in, and have input from the very folks that you're hoping that. The questions you're developing will, so, so again, it's part of just the idea of, you know, I say. Heck, just distribute it, get people to have inputs and then you have.
And as a twenty-year researcher at Rand, I couldn't disagree with them.
And, and we're, just putting in perspective, when I went to Arthur's place like a couple of months ago. And he was showing me all this brilliance on the treasury stuff. I mean, the first thing he shows me is, um, you know, economic paper he's working on and I'm just like, I'm, yeah, so I just have to.
Okay.
Out there, so we're good. So again, the other piece is just, um. You know, and I mentioned it, I don't wanna make a big thing on it, but I, I think it's just the idea of, and I have a recommendation later, but just a normative process. I think Andrew, you actually had this was, you know, let's just have it out there. Let's have, and again, with Susan. You know, we had this with Claudia, it was an administrative meeting, let's just have a process where we can just have a half hour, forty-five minutes and we just do a pow-wow. And if there are concerns about there, you need to have an open meeting because there are some things you're discussing around policy. Then have the, have the community and you could have the working session if you're afraid we're gonna have too many people making comments. We do an open working session, but we limit it to us. So I just put it out there and then, yeah. Yeah, and then the final thing, and I do wanna acknowledge Arthur, you know, you, you, you have great humility and you mentioned it. So this is not, you know, this is not promoting or finger pointing, it's just putting out. And then finally, you know, the idea of source documentation, there are some things on the survey, some questions that were there. I honestly have no idea how they, the questions were designed or developed. And again, it's not about saying they weren't done so very flawfully. But it's just the idea of having a little bit more like, who put this question together for that? I think if we just have a little bit more of that kind of openness, I think it'll go a really long way. Now with all that said, we've had the highest response rate ever, so, you know, let's balance this out, but I think let's see if we could even do better. Alright. Oh, I apologize. This was the thing I had at the end, but I, I guess it's there. So, you know, recommendations on this, I promise we'll get very, you know, into the data real soon. You know, we should think about this process that's a little bit more inclusive and then perhaps the idea of have a host, an open forum around the design and input. Keep it a working session, but maybe close the comments. And again, this is next year, but just putting it out there. And then, you know, something to follow up, but just, we've addressed it. This goes away if you have that open session and it's a working session, but. You know, I was a little confused about why we couldn't talk about some things and we don't have to talk about it now, but just putting that out there. Cool. Item response design, again, we. Item response design, again, we've covered, but you know, this just gets into that. There were some things which for me personally. I proposed that I wanted to see, but they weren't, but also know they'll be covered perhaps by other task forces, so. I, there were some questions around storm order management that I thought, given. You know, resident concerns, we could put in there, and then also ran antisemitism, but I think we recognize that the task force. They do have the authority where they could do some snap polling, and I know the antisemitism. And it's possible the storm order management task force will also, so I think it's important to get some, some inputs on those. Um, the election piece, I know for good reason, we said that we were going to drop it because, you know, consistently. It was ninety percent or more. But it might be just one of those things, again, I, I, I can probably guarantee if the election committee had their say, we wouldn't have dropped it. So I just want to be careful about. You know, dropping things, I, I'm for it, right? I'm for the idea of always looking at it, dropping, adding. But sometimes even in questions that don't necessarily have variation, it's going to be very skewed to a very positive. Um, sometimes they're valuable. And then, again, the ethics, I know this is going to be something, and I'm not going to dwell on it. Um, I know there's a lot of thought behind this, and I want to respect everyone who has put. Time in this, um, Susan, others, you know, this is a, a four-year process, members of the ethics committee. And so just mentioning that as part of this deliberative, inclusive process. I do think that there were suggestions by, by many residents, council members, perhaps even committee around. You know, let's put some context and explanation, this deserves a little bit more than an item. And perhaps maybe even look at a few. So I'm just putting out there the context of. Where perhaps in the future we could even make this stronger, that's what this is about. And then, another example around item unpacking. So again, there were questions around the building code, and I put this out there because we're going to talk about it. Is here's a question that talked about setbacks. And then the examples given are swing sets, barbecues and jungle gyms, and I can tell you. As a parent, and we've got our, you know, trampoline thingamajigee in the back. You know, I'm going to be like, no way am I going to be looking at that. And then it says, should all things? So, you know, again, putting in perspective, I put a comment, you know, but, you know, folks have concerned, have expressed concern about the code. And enforcing the code specific to things in the setback around water retention. So I want to be a little bit careful. Because when we see the results of this very shortly, you can see the results of the way that the question is set up. Give certain responses, but it may be not indicative of exactly the sentiment. So again, just recognizing, looking at the data and saying. But, you know, it may not be fully representative of some of the things.
Though, uh, let, let me just mention that those. Things have been used repeatedly as examples. Uh, of things that were considered in the past. But I just want to, this was a consistent set of things that were, were reviewed in the past. So that's why it would include.
Go over the results.
Yeah.
Great. And then, again, I want to just point out with, with Arthur, you know, again, we changed an awful lot of the responses just to make it, you know, stronger from. A psychometric perspective of creating these Likert scales, a few. You know, and we'll talk, but the design, again, you know, the yes, no, and other things, you know, it, then if you get into how you interpret some of those results. So trends and observations. I, what I did is I created this table, so I thought it would be a little bit easier for us to see. And you can see, this is around village operations, meetings, events and services, and, you know. I highlighted specifically where things that came up that were less than the fifty percent threshold. But I also want to be very careful. And again, as people have pointed out, the N, the total sample size can get very small in some of these, these pieces. So again, it's, it's descriptive. This is not statistically powered. But it's something for us to just look at. And if we look at the village operations and planning. Everything is well above. Well, everything is above fifty percent. I highlighted in yellow everything that was below sixty percent. But if you look at the N and then very satisfied, uh, or satisfied, strongly agree. Or agree. Eighty-two percent. Are very satisfied or satisfied with village operations, seventy-four around percent around contacted the village office. Whether they contacted the village council, it drops a bit, fifty-eight percent, but I guarantee, you know, Andrew, I guess. If, if members of Capitol Hill had fifty-eight percent satisfaction, they'd be pretty happy about that. Um, VMA newsletter, you know, weekly wrap-ups, again, eighty-three percent. I mean, these are things to be really proud of, right? Village website, you know, fifty-six percent, there were a lot of great. You know, comments, you know, so again, we'll follow up on that. And decision-making, that was, you know, at the cutoff fifty-one percent, and I think that we. Can follow up, and I would do want to share, there was a robustness, as Arthur mentioned, like eight hundred. I mean, we just got this data not long ago, so I think we're going to continue to have these discussions. So meetings, I don't want to spend or dwell too much time on it because of the sample size. But just putting in perspective, you know, I think. You know, the, none of this is necessarily, you know, shocking in terms of, we know people love community engagement and that is reflected there. And then, you know, ethics and election, you know that there's been some tensions and other things, so, you know, but again, looking at the sample size, I just want to be a little bit careful. Um, in terms of events. Between candidate form, shred event, Independence Day, volunteer appreciation, movie nights. Everything is well above, you know, sixty percent with a high independence of eighty-four percent. So again, reflected and candidate form, so just recognizing again, bravo. And then services. I think this is something where Michael and everyone is on, on top of, you know, looking again, everything is well above that sixty percent. Oh, sorry, you can't see it or? Oh, I apologize, it might be the, here, you can share mine.
Okay, no, okay, got it.
So, I highlighted the one piece that is the police patrols.
Right.
Right, forty-one percent. And again, this is not surprising, so again, triangulating as we call it. The responses from here to what we've heard, what we've seen, this is something that we definitely want to look for follow, and as you know, I know Arthur read them all. And perhaps many of the other council members, but the qualitative feedback, I think, really expressed, you know, areas of concern. Any questions before I move on? So again, bravo, and again, some trends aware. Alright. So, drumroll, I know a lot of folks have been thinking about ethics, and so I'm just, I'm presenting, look. I want to just be very careful because I know. Folks know how I voted my voting record. This is a completely objective look at the data, and folks can, you know, beat me up if they want to, but I went into this with eyes wide open. I expected, quite frankly, I had no idea. I, what the findings would be, but here they are, at least on the survey, and now you could beat up the survey for what it's worth. But just sharing objectively. So overall. And again, of a hundred and sixty-four responses, I went into granularity here more than the other questions, knowing what's riding on this. So, of all the responses, you had twenty percent said yes in the affirmative, thirty-three individual responses. Forty-eight percent said no, which is seventy-eight of the one sixty-four. And then thirty-two percent said not sure, unsure, fifty-three of the one sixty-four. Okay, so you can see that, just in terms of the breakout. Now, I recoded. Looking at yes versus no or not sure. Twenty percent, again, that's static because that's not changing, and then you simply do the math, and that's eighty percent no or not sure. Then what I did was I eliminated the not sure. And I adjusted for. Blank as well, and that gets to, again, thirty-three is constant. And the seventy-eight, and that is thirty percent yes, affirmative to expand seventy percent no. Finally, again, because I am a data geek. What I did was I did a straight line allocation of not sure, saying flip a coin, fifty percent. When you do that again, the, it, it, the results are thirty percent. Thirty-six say yes, sixty-four percent say no. And there you go. And again, comment, residents at this time are overwhelmingly either not in favor or unsure, and I will get to. A recommendation on what this means. Um, then finally, again, delving into this one question more than the others. Do you favor expanding coverage comments? I want to share. Fifty-four unique comments, I read every single one of them, and in order to do this coding, and I want to just share that with everyone. Um, so forty-two of the fifty-four. Comments. Were reasons why they did not favor. Eight of the comments were supportive. Three were maybe, and one I put not applicable because it talked about permitting, so whatever that's worth. So the not in favor, the trending, the themes of not in favor. Which were the most frequently things that came up. Under not in favor, unnecessary, deterrence to volunteering, overreach to bureaucratic. Why this keeps coming back. Doesn't support the process, but yes to ethics. And not all officials are the same. Supportive. Really, and again, the N is, is relatively small in terms of the comments. Is good governance, hiring concerns and uniformity. And then maybe, uh, mention things like the question was confusing or they need more information. So again. So then I want to put this idea, and again, there will be a punchline in this in, in, just very shortly, but misunderstanding or misinformation. So I want to put this out there. And again, I think it's important for us as a council. In that. Look. You know where I sit, there's a, the, I'm not, that, that, that's, that's fine, but I do want to share, I, I do fully believe. That those who are, I'm not, that are aligned with my views. Are in good faith, doing every single thing in their opinion that is in the best interest of this community. I, there, there's no debate on that. But at the same time. Honestly, if I was sitting on their side, I'd say, well. There's a fairly overwhelming size of number of people who are saying they don't want it, or they don't, or they're unsure, and I want to put this out there and then gain your punchline. Because I, honestly, if, if I were sitting on that side. I would be a little bit wary of trying to get this through, knowing this, that there is that much uncertainty or unsure or whatever, so here.
Discussing at this point?
Alright, well, I'm, I'm almost done, yeah. So here.
Almost done.
If a C E C member hires, these are comments. A friend. As a food vendor for July fourth, doesn't vet that friend, and the vendor gives someone food poisoning. Should we be able to file an ethics complaint? This was in the affirmative. No, this was a yes response, this was a response of someone who's in supporting of it. So. So, exactly, so what I'm.
That's the point.
The point is, is that. An example of we need to. Understand there's misunderstanding and misinformation, because as we know, C E C members don't hire anyone.
Uh, suppose they substituted the word choose.
Recommend?
Recommend, yeah.
Possibly, and maybe that is something that could be, you know, thought of in terms of the communication that could go out. In terms of explaining this, but again, I think the idea of no one hires or fires on the C E, they don't sign any of that, but anyway. Next one is, it should be a no-brainer. Because whoever agrees to avoid conflicts of interest or bias in their official acts. Let's be very clear, every single person. Who volunteers has to do a conflict of interest form. And they also take the oath. So whether or not you believe in the affirmative of the process. Everyone is covered by a conflict of interest, so I'm just putting that out there. So. That is sort of the closure in terms of the review of the ethics piece in depth. The building code one, I just want to put out there in terms of the very satisfied. Um, and the specifics. So they're kind of a little bit all over in terms of the height restricted on sides of the building. Um, and again, look at the responses, fairly significant, not, you know, and fifty-six. Were, um, strongly agreed or very satisfied with, you know, that the building height should be restricted. So that was one that was in the affirmative. Village impose a maximum length on new buildings, it was sort of, you know, it was just under that fifty percent threshold. Um, all things larger than a certain size, you know, again, with swing sets and barbecues and jungle gyms. Thirty-six percent, but I think we already talked about, you know, all things, and, you know, I want to be, you know, careful because some things in the setbacks, I think. Don't equal other things in the setback. And then finally, you know, satisfied with construction activities in time. Again, that is kind of on the cuff of about fifty-two percent. I know for me. You know, when, when I had, you know, construction around me, it started at the seven AM or eight AM on a Saturday, I, I felt like I wanted to call someone, so, yeah. So comment, you know, I think that honestly, there's an opportunity here, knowing there's a lot of interest. Perhaps, I don't want to, we'll get to it, but I think how do we engage residents to continue on with this? And then finally, under future considerations, we talked about the sampling. You know, what is our frame? The design, you know, I think that we could talk about just how we are a little bit more inclusive. Um, and I went through some of the design aspects of items, and finally, recommendations. I feel that we should have some standard codified process that's administrative of just how we design the survey each year. That it's just a nothing burger, that we have an administrative meeting, make it a working session, have residents come, whatever it is. And just get it done, and we don't have controversy. Two, I feel, and again, this is me, this is not the council. I feel, given what we have seen on the ethics in this survey, we should take a pause. In two thousand twenty-three, I am not saying that you folks, you know, but you've got the votes, whatever it is. I feel you should take a pause, given this feedback. Look, if it were reversed. We wouldn't be talking about this. If it were the other way around. There, there'd be no objection, right? This is what it is. But and again, I want to be very careful. This is not about a yes or no, this is about. The significance of. Concerns coupled with misunderstandings with the idea of needing to provide additional information. So I feel. And again, I look to my colleagues, it's up to them in their discussion, that they should consider a pause for the remainder of the year. Think about ways they want to communicate this so that they can get more of the village. Perhaps under their wing. And, you know, think about it, something in the new year and whatever modality is. I put your referendum on a next election, but I will consider it, but I feel. Taking a pause and getting the ducks in a row on communication of why is probably a good thing. And then two other things. I think, again, standing up perhaps. A temporary, I, I want to be a little careful because we've got a lot of task force here. But how do we engage? Is it a working group? Is it a listening? I don't know what it might be, but how do we engage them on this building code? Because I think of Doug and Hiromi, and I see Gene, and I know others, is that there's a lot of desire. To maintain the integrity of VMA around new construction. We've seen the idea of questions around enforcement of existing code and the possibility of tweaking new things. I feel we need something, maybe it's a couple of coffee sessions, but whatever. And then finally. You know, I think that we should have as normative a listening session, I am willing to. Post it, everyone is, is, you know, council members, everyone, you know, it could be everyone or just myself. But sometime, perhaps in December, um, we'll find it and we'll put it out there, and, uh, we'll, we'll get it as a midpoint, not only follow up to the survey. But as a midpoint to our fiscal year, which is coming up around the block, so with that.
Okay, uh, that is our discussion.
So one quick thing I want to say is that I think that ethics. Statistics, the, the responses indicate more of the successful disinformation campaign and the lack of. True education on our parts. As to what actually is involved. Because people still seem to have, reading some of the comments. Some misperception that horrible things will happen to them if they commit some. Unknowing breach, which could not be further from the truth. As we all know, there haven't been any complaints filed. Since two thousand twenty, before this was actually enacted, when there was actually not a process to resolve them.
And, and, and the only. Uh, negative outcome is, is dismissal from the committee.
Right.
Yeah.
But. I mean, I think people really don't understand, and when you put in a question, do you favor expansion? If it's something they don't really fully grasp, they're going to say, uh, no.
Okay.
Stay away from that one.
Okay, so the, uh. Results of the survey are in the packet tonight, they're available for everybody to take a look at and mull over.
And I will post them on the website as well.
And, okay, that will be posted. Great, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda gets to one of the issues that have been up for discussion in the survey.
But why are we moving? I would just like not to have an ethics discussion tonight.
No, okay, we're not discussing ethics.
Well, this, this, your survey process took quite a while. So it was very helpful, but I think it's just. Well, I appreciate, but I think there's a lot of. Well, I appreciate, but I think there's a lot of folks who are concerned, and I do have a question. Because everyone, I think there's a lot of concerned minds, which is. Will is, and let's do it now. So we know it's out there. There is no mystery. Is this council, are the majority of council members still moving forward? With a vote of adoption in December, before we hit the holidays. Based upon the recent results of the survey, and I would like to take that motion now. So it's out there, so people know. Based upon the data, because remember, and it was in the last meeting, and I apologize, Andrew. But as we all have a lot of other stuff and families as well, and I feel for you, but let's be very clear. There is an overwhelming majority of residents who are unhappy and unsure about this thing. And I had been given a very specific promise. That no votes of any kind would be taken until after the survey, and a vote was taken to introduce. So the clock is running on this. Okay, so this is not anymore about a question of introduction. This is a question about adoption, about something that had been defeated soundly.
It it's important, that this is not on the agenda. We are not discussing.
So, okay, then you guys, okay, then what you could do is you could vote me down. But I want.
What what are we voting on?
I want to, I want to have right now, and I want to settle, are we expecting that the council is going to vote? For an adoption of ethics extension in December?
It is tentatively on the agenda for December.
I I I, well, I am willing to put on the record and I'll go around and everyone can say. I am affirmatively saying that we should not host a vote and.
How did we get to discussing ethics? This was.
Arthur, because you're the one who said you would not take any votes and did, and it's been introduced.
And we have the survey, it's on the clock.
Okay, well. I'm sorry, you can vote to silence me, but I'm saying right now. I want to take a vote.
You are silenced.
I want to take a vote.
What, so take a vote.
Great, I want to take a motion for this council on whether or not they are expecting. To host and have a vote on adoption of the expansion of the ethics ordinance.
So the question is to the council.
On the agenda.
Am I personally expecting there to be a vote?
Are you vote, are you going to support on the agenda? Are you going to vote on the agenda to have a vote in December?
I I, I mean, how can you be affirmative or I don't know.
What is not? We are not setting the agenda.
I have to commit right now to how I feel about the agenda of December. That's how I have to.
You you made a motion. The motion has not been seconded.
I'll second the motion.
You want to second the motion?
Quick roll call. I will continue. Okay, I will second now everyone.
Okay, so when the motion is. Right now to take a vote on whether or not the adoption vote for the expansion of the ethics ordinance. Will be placed on the agenda in December.
Don't know.
So we'll vote. The question is, will it be placed on the agenda? All in favor of agreeing to.
Place the vote on the agenda.
To decide tonight.
Right, it's it's a decision to not not whether we will have it, but if there's a.
Okay, let me be very clear.
Please.
Of the very clear as possible.
Yes.
Okay, this is important because it could legislation affecting the entire community. Okay, last time this came up in September.
Okay, can we just just be clear?
No, 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 don't come up. This is very important. I want to be very clear in why I'm doing this now. Because in September, while I was away, the chair, well, let's be.
We have a vote on the table.
I want to get out what I'm addressing a question. Last time this came up in September, the chair had introduced this the day before an open meeting.
Jeff, we've gone through all that. So you have a question on the table right now.
Okay.
Are we, do we, are we going to?
Are you going to put it on the agenda? The chair can make that. He puts down the agenda and we approve or disapprove of the agenda.
That is untrue, actually. This is a policy decision, and this is something that, and actually, it's Ron is here. Ron, you talked about it in an orientation to all our volunteer residents. On committee, and we talked about how the idea of setting an agenda is actually a gray area. So I'm going to ask the question of our. Uh sorry. So Ron, please explain to us and those who are here. In terms of setting agendas, right, and I appreciate it. I remember in that very discussion. We talked about the grayness of 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 setting agendas and talking about policy. And also reasonableness for notification. So could you please clarify the idea of setting an agenda about an adoption vote?
Michael.
And how is that in terms of administrative versus the idea that a council may need to weigh in on whether or not that gets placed on the agenda?
I'm not sure I understand the the question.
I I I, you're not the only one.
Well, you weren't at, you weren't at that meeting, Arthur. You weren't at that meeting where we.
So, uh, under, under the charter, under the village charter. For an ordinance to be adopted, it has to be introduced at one meeting. And then considered after a public hearing at a subsequent meeting, at least thirty days later. So I, I think it's probably fair to say that once something is introduced. There is an expectation that there's going to be a public hearing and possible council action at a subsequent meeting. The council can decide when that subsequent meeting is going to take place.
So Ron, I appreciate this feedback. Maybe what we'll do is we'll take it off Ron. I'm happy to go through. We have a recording of that resident volunteer session. That we had. It was very clear, Ron, in that discussion that we had, we talked about agenda setting. And it was very specific about the gray area of setting the agenda. And we talked very specifically about reasonable, the reasonableness for notification. And that's part of the orientation. So what I could do is get back to that.
Well, that, yeah, that's a different issue. I can explain that if that would be helpful. So the Open Meetings Act provides. You have to give reasonable notice before a meeting takes place. And an agenda is to accompany that notice. The agenda doesn't have to have every item of business that will be undertaken by the council. But should have the items on it that the council knows it's going to undertake. So that the the public does have reasonable notice of what's going to be discussed at that meeting.
And so Ron, as I think referring to Andrew's uh 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 question, or at least uh thought is. So can the chair unilaterally put a item on the agenda?
How did this get onto the agenda for this evening?
Because, because I, because it's important. There are many residents who are very.
Talking about reasonable notice.
So, well, you gave reasonable notice for introduction twenty-four hours before the last meeting. So I want to know in front on public record. Are you planning on giving then another twenty-four hours? When will we know when this is set? And I have a reasonable question. Is it up to the chair to unilaterally decide whether or not. A piece of legislation could be introduced or adopted, or is that a decision for the council to make on a vote? That's a, that's my question.
So the the village charter provides that the council shall operate according to rules that it adopts. And that's a common provision in municipal charters in the area. And although that is a common provision. None of the clients that I represent or the other jurisdictions in the area that I'm aware of. Have actually taken that formal step of adopting rules of procedure. Most loosely follow Robert's Rules of Order. And most operate by custom and practice. To allow the chair as the one that presides over the meeting to draw up the agenda with the. Town manager, village manager. Yeah, that said, that's not codified. And any single council member can make a motion to add or subtract something from an agenda at any time.
Got it. And if a council member makes a motion to subtract, then how is that adjudicated? Is that done by then a vote?
Yes, under Robert's.
Doesn't require an open discussion, it would just be an open vote administratively around whether something's included or not.
Well, yeah, that, and that's where we do have gray area from guidance issued by the Open Meetings Compliance Board. So. Administrative function does not need to be discussed in an open meeting. Sometimes setting an agenda is administrative according to the Open Meetings Compliance Board. However, if there's going to be debate from a policy perspective as to what should be on the agenda. The Open Meetings Compliance Board says, then it's no longer administrative, and then you should have an open meeting to debate that. So it's that similar guidance that I applied with respect to the survey, you know, knowing that there's con. Controversial issues in the survey and that the council is likely to engage in policy discussions. You know, I had recommended that those discussions be open because the Open Meetings Compliance Board provides we should err on the side of openness. So if it's a fifty fifty question, you you hold an open meeting.
Great, Ron, I really appreciate that and really thankful for that. And I wish that that advice had been shared openly to all council members before we went out the closed session. Thank you.
Uh, okay, moving on, the uh intention had been. The uh the ethics committee, the ethics ordinance was introduced uh a month ago. We said that we would hold off until we had the survey results. We have the survey result. The intention was to have a vote in December. Uh and I will propose now, what we have not yet set an agenda, that we go forward with that. Moving on then to the next item. You don't have any last.
Oh, yes, it is, because you said in writing and everyone sees it, you said to me. No votes of any crime would take place. So this is not some simple performative. Oh, introduction. This is the fact that you are now going to.
I acknowledge we had a difference of views and opinions.
It wasn't views. You said specifically in writing, no votes would be taken. And now you've set the clock and motion on a piece of legislation that you folks are going to basically put through. To cover all residents with an overwhelming.
You're out of order now. We are moving on with the agenda. You are out of order, Jeff. We are moving on with the agenda. Okay.
This will be, it sounds like it's going to be on the agenda in December. It's out there in the public record.
Oh, the next item on the agenda is a a discussion of building code. There were two items in there. One was a uh uh an amendment to include. Plantar boxes, bio retention boxes. No?
You you agreed and and Ron went ahead and drew up, uh drew up what that policy would look look like.
Yeah.
Um and Jeff responded, replied all, um recommending that we don't include that on this.
Oh, we are not including that.
So it's not in the packet, and that was in an opening email between all of us.
Oh, okay, I somehow missed that.
Jeff didn't want to talk about the bio retention boxes and how long those, I mean, inside yard setback at this meeting.
Okay, okay.
Uh, I have been a misunderstanding. I didn't say that. That's, no, I said actually the opposite was that we would probably talk about it, it's meaning as part of it.
Okay, then we're not talking about it. Uh, I thought we were.
Well, we could talk.
But well, we but it we need the draft, we need the, let me just say that we have prepared. A a draft uh to revise the building code, to add bio retention boxes. Add elements of that type uh to define it as not being. Cannot included in the side setbacks, but we'll have to address that next week, next month. Um, the other item was, um, we have discussed informally many times over the past year. That we should be readdressing the building code uh to. To deal with residents' concerns, comments, complaints, that buildings are just getting too big. Um, I had thought that we might be able to do this in a very quick way. Not doing a full revision of the building code, but looking at some very narrow things that could be done. To start that off, I went through all of the building codes of our of our neighboring jurisdictions. All almost all of whom seemed to have Ron as their legal counsel. Um, I also was sitting in on a mayor's meeting earlier this week. And raised the question, uh asking for any advice they had. Uh and they all said, well, either we're doing what you're doing, or we're following the county code, except for Somerset. Uh has a study ongoing. They just started it, looking at impermeable surfaces. Now. Uh, I was particularly in those questions on the survey how to do with. Can we get at this in a very narrow, quick way of just limiting height, limiting length? Of having some very simple limit. I didn't think we needed a task, another task force to look into this. I actually called Chris Jakubiak, who had participated, very helpful. In creating the first building code and also worked with the water ability committee. Uh he is no longer available. He is a full-time city planner for the city of Annapolis. Uh but he is not available. Um, when I looked at the building codes, I, what I found, I was a little surprised, either follow us. Very deliberately, we were one of the first to actually have building codes different from the county. Uh or they adopt the county code. The one difference is the village of Chevy Chase. Looks at gross floor area. And has a restriction, first, it it varies with lot size, but with an absolute restriction of seventy-five hundred square feet. Now, I looked at seventy-five hundred square feet. We're talking Potomac. These are, this is the size of the big houses in Potomac. The largest house I could find using Zillow. Uh in Martin's edition is six thousand square feet, and that was done before we introduced our building code. Uh so to have a meaningful limit within Martin's edition, we're talking five thousand to fifty-five hundred. There are a few handful of houses right now that are five thousand square feet or larger. It's a small handful, as far as I could tell, I have not done a complete survey. Um, but there are other things we could do. We could, uh that, I'm, this is just copying what the village has done. Um, the town of Chevy Chase also has a gross floor area, but it's not limited. It's it goes by proportion of lot size. Uh so it could get bigger. I mean, you need to have a very big block to have that.
I think proportionality is what what I care about most. I mean, if you have a, if you have a property like the the Chair Emeritus Weller. Um, you know, you you could have a bigger home on there. I don't, I don't want a Potomac style like palace, like Versailles there. But I'm saying that it's different than what we're seeing on Cummings, where there's hardly any permeable surface left. So I think it's like proportionality before restricting. Initial conversation.
Okay, going forward, uh the water committee, the water task force is likely to come up with. Impermeable surface uh requests. As this, and this is what's driving Somerset, it's wa, it's a water issue. Do we move forward on this? I want guidance from the council. Do we move forward with this in what way? We could hire a consultant on this to help us out. Uh doesn't, Chris Jakubiak is not the only person in town. Um, so any, any suggestions from manager, council member, Susan?
Yeah, I think we do probably need a consultant. Um, just to sort of help us navigate quickly. We could wait and get all this data from.
Susan, please speak up.
Yes, I suggested that we hire a consultant.
Okay, um, okay, any other, any other advice?
I would, I mean, I would. I would, I mean, I would, I would also, Naomi, I hope you can hear and others, um, I I also believe that we should get. You know, have some outside consultation and one thing I just wanted to clarify. Was, and again, I see Doug and Hiromi are on here and recognizing as part of this. It's also looking at existing code and really delving into those issues of the pertinences, the water retention devices. Is it connected at the? Foundation or is it in the visible above the ground and you know, and then also the calculations, I think there were also some questions about the. Porches. Is a.
We do, we did have, we do have this coming up next month, which where where we will consider that explicitly.
So ju- I'm just adding as part of how we calculate currently and enforcing code, just making sure that that's.
Yeah, so I mean, maybe maybe having a professional. Look at what we have right now in order to give us recommendations to how to prove upon. And all those gray areas, right? We were talking about gray areas.
Well, so there there there's gray areas are what are the definition of things and setbacks. There's explicit areas, right now, the only dimension that we regulate is the height. Looking at it from the street. There the height from any other side is unregulated, so if it's on a slope, we can have four stories above ground. Also, we do not regulate at the total length, we want we. Regulate the wall plane until we get some kind of a break. Moving out or moving in. We do not regulate the entire length of a wall. So these are areas, I think, to be looked at, but we have several different dimensions, this is where. Getting a a professional to help would be useful.
Well, I'm supportive of anything. That would. Change or fix the code to just get back more green space and blue sky, I mean, I just feel like. Because a homeowner or builder can change their house and take it all the way, you know, out and all the way, doesn't mean just can. You can, doesn't mean you should, and we're losing our soul in this neighborhood, the houses are getting too big. And there's, I mean, if you wanna live in a big house, don't you want a yard? I don't you want space? You don't, I mean, I. I don't understand what's happening, and whatever we could do, kind of rein that in and and examine that, I I would.
Okay, so moving forward, we will look for a uh. A professional city planner or somebody of that nature. To help us out doing this. Okay, good. Uh, moving on, um, treasurers report.
Awesome, I'll make this brief, this I've taken up some lip service and other areas, I know in general. I think again, just recognizing Arthur and all his great stewardship, we're we're in good standing. As you'll see in the treasurer's report. You know, we're looking at actual and budgeted. Um, if you're looking, you know, the net income, there's nothing surprising that we may be falling short in terms of what we expect. Because it comes in the the cycles as we talk, another thing, just recognizing with total expenses, we're actually under. But as we take on some of these bigger capital projects, I think we'll recognize that that will also then. You know, really jump up, so really, there's nothing that's out of the ordinary, and again, just kudos with our village staff and and council. And then the final thing, just to mention in terms of scheduling, we did complete our audit on time. Uh, which it was submitted October thirty first, uh, which. Again, is no small feat, there is a lot that goes in and our accountants and auditor. Uh, fully praised, you know, Andrew, Arthur, and Susan for all the work they've done on the past ones. And so just recognizing it's it's not an easy feat, so we'll go through that, but in general, as everyone recognizes, we're in great standing. And actually, one thing in the formal reports and audits that we'll see. Is because of the review and because of our bug where our actual net income. Uh, went up well over a half million, so we'll talk more about this and the full details will come out, so with that said, back over.
Okay, thank you. Just to clarify on the record, I have unfortunately nothing to do with previous audits, it was all Susan, so I just don't wanna take credit. I don't wanna take any credit, sorry.
Okay, thank you, uh, that brings us to finally at any. Resident, I say Naomi, and I thought I saw Jean hand up before, Naomi?
Yes, I wanna make two comments about the survey. Survey design. Is a science. And I really think we should respect it as such. And hire a survey design consultant. Or a call upon residents in the community. Who have had that expertise. So let us not just. Design something on our own unless we are experts in this area. Secondly. I don't, what I hear from. I'll name her Susan and Arthur, that you don't like the results of the survey. Twenty percent of the residents said they do not want. They they that more than, there are twenty percent who, only twenty percent who approve expanding. That leaves eighty percent who do not. The fact that you're not considering this as a serious finding. To. Reverse. To uh vote on it right away. Is a rejection of resident input. It's um, it's really disappointing.
Okay, thank you. Well, we're all, we have, we will probably be voting on it, we you don't know how we will vote yet. But. Uh, anyone else? I thought I saw Jean's hand up earlier, she looks like she's disappeared. Larry.
Yeah, uh, Jeff, I'd like to ask you. You said you had a statement in writing from Arthur that he said that it would not be on the agenda, wouldn't be voted on when you were away, is that true?
Well, let me just put it this way, it's in, it's in the meeting packet, and I think we recognized it as. A series, uh, it was a mistake, Arthur had kindly admitted to that. And yes, there was a statement that said that no votes of any kind would be taken until after the survey and. There was a vote actually taken before the survey, which was the introduction, and that has created. The pressure cooker, so again, I. But that is why there's a lot of emotion because of the pressure cooker that was set in motion.
Where the misunderstanding was was my misunderstanding, I construed vote to mean a vote up or down. On the uh, on the motion, not to, rather than a vote to introduce.
I I understand that, but you you acknowledged that you did make that statement.
Uh, yes, I did.
And 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 excuse me. And in good conscience. For you to try to push forward for December. You made a mistake, we all make mistakes, so what, okay?
Well, the the mistake was.
Arthur, you're interrupting me. Arthur, Arthur. I waited till here. My, I could have come on mic at any time, please let me speak.
Oh, go ahead. Oh, actually, one of the, one of the survey. And let people speak, so speak, Larry, please.
Okay, so my point is. You can amend that accident. By delaying this and not proceeding in December, first off, this isn't urgent. No, nobody's gonna catch on fire here. This isn't uh, the the, in fact. This is, this is so embarrassing, it's like it's junior high school squabbling. While many of the things the village should be dealing with are not being handled. While you do this crap. So please. Realize you don't have to bully your way ahead. Made a mistake, it can go on in the future, and and I think that's maybe what you should think about. The other thing is this um. Group you think about uh doing something with the code. You know, the county, the state. Revises their codes every three years. They don't do it because they wanna waste the money. They do it because. The codes. Will never work as a final addition, they need an ongoing uh input. And. Interestingly enough, one of the key elements that you look at every three years, which I'm on one of those code writing bodies, is. The changes and why those changes are coming about and what's being discovered. So if you're looking at this, this thing about a quick and easy upgrade of the ordinances. That have to do with building, I think as a good government, you'll have to realize. That's gonna be something that's gonna be something you have to look at. On an ongoing basis, and maybe your consultant could give you advice about how to structure that.
Good, that good, good point, thank you. Susan.
Hi, thanks. Thanks to everybody for, you're all doing a lot of work and um. And I really appreciated that PowerPoint presentation that that Jeffrey did, it takes a lot of energy to put all that together and effort. And it really does help to see the information kind of visually. Um, so I I really appreciate that and and the points that you made. And Michael, thank you so much for putting the crosswalk at Bradley and Brookville on the. That I I'm so happy that's really being talked about, I know it it's a long. Process and it might be a long time before it gets put in, but I'm just very happy to hear that it's actively being discussed.
Susan, when while you're at it, support a stop sign there. Uh, there's, that's gonna be a big argument in the future with the states.
I totally agree, yeah.
And another old idea of yours, I I'm beginning to like more and more, there's paths. Uh, between properties. I invite you to do research on that, go look up the Platts, look up the Easements, check it out. Don't ask Michael to do it, uh, but I I will assign you the task of going out and figuring out how to. Go to the county and find all those the documents. Good idea, Marty, I see your hand up. Marty, are you there? Unmute.
Yes, thanks. I I I had a quick question, if if the. Agenda for the December meeting is going to include the final adoption vote on this proposed expansion of the ordinance. Um, at what point will residents be informed that that's going to happen?
I presume when we adopt the agenda.
So that might be just the day before.
I would actually suggest that before we take a vote, we do one of those. Full page explanations of exactly why it's being done, exactly what. Cause the need for it, why it makes sense.
I try to get the agenda out the Friday before council meetings, I try, but you know, of course, things can come up.
Marty, if you heard Susan, she proposes a a. Something that we have have not done that we should have been doing is. Uh, putting out full scale descriptions of why we are introducing. Uh, new uh, uh, changes to the code, so we will be doing that. Uh, beforehand, so there will be plenty of time to consider that.
My my question is a little more specific. Um, on the building code, I really like the idea of hiring a consultant, I'm talking specifically about whether or not there will be an adoption vote. On the expansion of the ethics ordinance in December and how much notice residents will have. About that, because as you saw from the survey results, so many residents said either a flat out no. Or they're not sure, and um, I think residents need to be able to have a reasonable opportunity. To. Um, discuss this, Jeff had proposed a a forum, a general forum and and you know, listening session on December twelfth. Um, and I suppose this might come up there, but the formal hearing before adoption has not been set up as a separate hearing. And given the survey results, I think that it would be really helpful. To actually do, maybe Ron is the one to address this. Uh, to actually have a public hearing, not at a council meeting, when a vote's gonna be taken ten minutes later. But a separate hearing well before the council meeting at which there's a vote to adopt this. Um, again, it's it it's partly a process question of. You know that 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 many residents don't support this, that was true back in twenty twenty one when it first came up. And I I really feel like that that the council has been working very hard. To be trustworthy, to be more more transparent, and I appreciate every step in that direction, it's it's really been helpful. Uh, but this is, this is such a. Controversial issue and has been since it was first introduced. And if you simply have a process where. Uh, maybe a week before the next council meeting on the fourteenth, which is pretty soon. There's a statement prepared by people who are in favor of expanding the ordinance, and there's no equal opportunity. For any kind of public distribution of statements from the many residents who are opposed to it, that seems to me to be inherently unfair. And if residents aren't even notified that the vote's gonna happen in December until possibly forty eight hours beforehand. Um, that absolutely does not pass. I hate to say it, but doesn't pass the smell test. And 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 so, you know, this is a council that has worked hard to build community trust back, and I appreciate that, but. Let's not shoot ourselves in the foot, I mean, please don't. You know, set up a a process here that is going to create a whole nother round of controversy. That could be avoided by deferring the vote. Or by having a open hearing on it with pros and cons, you've got some really interesting data here. And uh. I I would like to not. Controversial, so thank you for making sure equal time, eh?
But thank you, so I wanna address this because clearly the majority who have already made up their minds are just. You know, they are gonna do what they're wanna do, so I'm gonna put forth. A couple of things so administratively. That there's no questions because we know that folks like to follow their administrative procedures, so one, I already. Said that I'm gonna host a listening forum. So I I assume that no one can block me on that and anyone can come. The twelfth sounds like we may have a permit or a variance hearing, so I'm gonna suggest. Cause I'll be traveling internationally and otherwise, that we'll figure out a time. On either Monday the eleventh or Wednesday the thirteenth, which isn't ideal if it's right before. The vote, but at least we'll have a standalone listening forum, it won't be a hearing, but it will be a listening forum on. Perhaps this or anything else, so I I'm just putting that out there. The other thing I just wanna.
Just one more question. When you scheduling this right now for those dates? I'm just, I mean, do you want full participation? By coordinated schedules?
A public meeting does require two council members to call for that, so if it's a public meeting, then. I mean, if you're hosting a private thing, I don't know, but.
But we did a listening forum, as I recall.
I just wanna be clear, I'm just looking at those dates while you're talking, I can't do either, we have a variance meeting on the twelfth. And the eleventh, eleventh, I'm going to a Hanukkah party in the evening.
We'll do this, uh, how about then we'll agree to then find dates that work for folks, I will, if I have to. Call in from eleven hour difference, I will, but let's just say the idea, so I need one other council member to agree that we'll have a listening forum.
May I just say something about that? Jeff, I appreciate your crusade, I do, I just don't know if a listening forum is going to sway. The three of them, I'm sorry, I just, I don't know, um, I think it'll be the same. Attendees, um, I would like to point out, I would like to point out though, when I attended the one in the spring. I don't think there were election committee members there, is this going to be? Deep breathing, sleeping, election, sorry, ethics, there were no ethics committee members, is this going to be a dialogue or just? A discussion, I just, I just, I I would like to see.
So let me address.
So I would support it if we could have.
So first of all, this is a listening forum, it's not a uh hearing on the ethics ordinance, it'll be listening forum because. Momentively, we've had one at this time about over the last couple of years, so it'll be open to other topics, in terms of who is available. It could be anyone, it could be all council members, it could be all committee members. And again, if folks, I there's nothing stopping me from doing it, but I'd like to offer it as a listening forum for the community on a lot of things. And I do wanna just be very careful, this, I wanna just be very, very clear, this is not my crusade. This is a, this is actually something that has been an obsession, which is around the idea of the ethics ordinance. I am just standing up for a s- a s- large majority of residents who say. Hold up, let's pause, so this is not a crusade, I wish I didn't have to bring this up.
Okay, just be fine, quickly, because we are on limited time, large majority of residents. Responded of those one hundred and seventy four, okay, just to clarify, all right.
Ron, Ron, Ron.
Okay, Ron, you, your hand is up.
Yeah, just. One point of order, so pursuant to the charter, section four oh six. Special meetings can be called by the chair or three members of the council. But as Jeff said, he he's welcome to have his own meeting with constituents.
So it so a a listening forum requires a vote of three people. You can't just have a lessening forum. For example, Ron, in the past, you've shared that. You can have council members who act as liaisons to the community. So I can't just sponsor it and then if three show.
You can, absolutely. You can, yes. Yeah, you've done that in the past, I believe.
Or and could that go out on constant contact then? Are you saying if three people don't vote, then I can't use content on that?
No.
No, no, I'm saying to compel a special meeting would require three. Council members, but you are certainly welcome to have your own meeting and and speak with constituents. And I see no reason why you would be prohibited from using constant contact.
The difference is a a formally sanctioned event versus just a council member hosting constituents.
Right. Now, and if a quorum, if a quorum shows up, then gotta make sure we've properly announced it. Cause a public.
Violation of a public meeting.
Right. So it'll be open to everyone and then whoever wants to show up can show up. And.
So 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 just sorry, since we're going down this avenue. So let's say hypothetically, Jeff is hosting this on his own accord, has a Zoom meeting, makes it hybrid. And two additional council members show up. How do you notice that? I mean, do you have to stop it and immediately notice it?
You also. No, no, the council members should should let Michael know in advance whether or not they want to attend.
So we can't do an audible.
Well, we could just notice it and then notice it as if as as if three people, as if a forum would show up, we can notice it. And then you're covered.
But that's a special meeting and requires three people to vote for it.
Correct.
Okay, well, uh, what do we want to do? Do we want to take a vote on it then? And then we'll know whether it's a special meeting or just a. Little Jeff sponsoring folks who are going to show up for uh discussion. That's fine.
You can make a.
To host a listening. Forum uh in December before the next council meeting. All those in favor, please.
Give me a second.
You need a second.
I will second.
All those in favor.
So can I can I ask a question before we proceed? Um, I would vote with favor only if the ethics committee members decide they think it's a a good idea and would participate. So is there a way to 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 table this based on that? Because they weren't, they weren't there the last time. And so I think there was misinformation the last time and and it wasn't. There there weren't folks there that could properly explain.
How about? How about? If we. Schedule a vote on the ethic committee in January. And hold a forum if anyone wants to attend a forum in January.
So that gives us time to 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 talk to the ethics chair and members to see if they would. Be yelling or interested to participate. Yeah.
Thank you, Arthur.
So so um but have a vote on whether we do that at the December meeting. Uh, the forum, I'm talking about the forum. I just, I just don't want to. I I I wanted to be as inclusive and as transparent as we possibly can. And I feel like the last time we did it through misunderstanding. Uh, the key members who could have explained it better to to constituency, to residents, were really worried about it. Um, weren't there.
Right.
So that's that's so so to me, if if the chair is suggesting we postpone any action until January. That would give us the time in December, and in the meantime, we can talk to the ethics committee or individuals on there. To vote on whether or not to host the forum formally versus just Jeff on his own.
Right.
Is that?
Yes.
Is that so that's factory?
Yes.
So it works. I mean, first of all, you just, we just punted it to January.
Yeah, right.
So that's so so that's that's good. And I don't like anyone. So.
Yeah, please. Okay.
Does that work, Jeff?
That work. We'll be back for.
So 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 let's just be clear. So the the council will. Know earlier than January, consider a adoption vote for the January council meeting, and then that will give us time whether we host a. Listening forum December or even in January.
Yeah.
Beforehand.
We have the first two weeks of January.
Right. And then December could be.
Just take it easy.
In in addition to listening.
Somebody will bring up ethics, I guarantee. All these people who talk about how the council never does anything except talk about ethics are always.
Well, in addition to a listening, I think we also have have a a talking session going both ways. Yeah, because many people have mistaken views of what's involved. Okay, okay. We'll have one last hand up for your fourth time tonight, Marty.
Thank you for your patience. I have a simple question. Is there going to be a standalone hearing? Um, before the adoption vote?
Not a hearing. It will be a discussion.
That was my question.
No, there will be a hearing.
When will the hearing be? That that's what I thought Ron had said.
The hearing will be in January.
At the same council meeting where the adoption vote is now scheduled.
Correct. Yeah, that's that's.
That's that's not.
Let me, let me, let me suggest that I I do think it's a good idea for the council to inform the residents. We've introduced this ordinance.
Yeah.
And our public hearing will be on such and such a date. And possible adoption will be on that date because, you know, the the public does need to be able to plan. To attend the public hearing, so.
January council meeting is the current understanding.
And so but hearing in this case is a.
January eighteenth is what it's currently scheduled for. Though I get back from vacation that week, so.
So so in recognizing in in all the minutia of this, the idea is that as normative procedure for VMA, we will have the public hearing. Of an ordinance adoption on the same day.
That's.
But what we'll also do is have a listening discussion uh sometime and encourage the entire ethics committee. Or representative and anyone else to come either December or January, whenever that might.
Right.
And there'll be some um state, there'll be something that'll come out as a communication. In the meantime, that will give everyone to get their ducks in the road to put out what they want to put out.
Yeah.
As long as it's legit.
I mean, we've come a a long way here because the initial vote that Jeff requested was whether or not there would even be. An adoption vote in December. So now we've we've progressed to having. Actually agreed to having an adoption vote in January.
Everything is tentative, remember. Everything in life is. Everything in life is tentative. Okay, Doug and Haromi, you're back.
Uh, yeah, thank you. And I I'll make this short, but I do want to thank you for um indicating that the uh. Planner box issue has will be on the agenda in December.
Right, yeah, I thought it was on tonight, but uh.
It was a misunderstanding.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, 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 that's fine. That's that's fine. If I heard you correctly, Arthur, um, you said that the draft is in development. So this is why I I I want to just. Mention this now, which may already be on on the radar, but it might be helpful just to put it on now so that there's time and preparation for December. So the the those very large, you know, um bio retention planner boxes are. One way um to have a large house with a large footprint and still comply with. Storm, the county stormwater management um restrictions, right? And so therefore, not permitting them in the setback is one way to constrain that footprint. So so you're, you know, we're. Uh, I understand you correctly on that. So I think that's a good thing, given this this discussion here tonight about the desire to. And your your research and and the steps you've taken, and thank you for that, and the sentiments that that Katie also and and Jeff also articulated. Um, that that is a a desired goal. But one thing that we learned during last month's uh hearing. Was that they are designed, these planner boxes are designed with a ten year life. That's as I recall, that's what the um. Uh, uh, uh developer said, meaning that that they will require maintenance at a certain point. Um, it's in order to avoid their failure or or lack of functioning and. Which would then produce a stormwater management problem that would impact on neighbors and 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 the village as a whole. And they also indicated that the maintenance of these, um, what they refer to as facilities. Would be the responsibility of the new owner. Now, it's unclear. How that would be enforced. It's also unclear how that responsibility would be communicated to the new owner. Um, and there doesn't seem to be a precedent for this. And as the village noted in its uh written decision, and thank you for sharing that. You know, that these are uncommon in a suburban setting and they're they're untested. It's for, you know, in in it you indicated it's. You know, and it a first impression and and all of that. So this is really, really new territory, but this question of. That they are in some sense a time limited solution. Needs to be factored in here. They are not a permanent solution because of the need for them to be maintained. And in the very case of thirty four nineteen uh Cummings as an example, but that you can use. You know, the in theory, it's 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 potentially a situation that might be replicated in other settings if these things are used. Is that we know and the record shows that the county appro- approved it based on the representations. Of the um builder and the developer, that they are, one, in the developer's words, completely separated from the foundation. And two, predominantly subterranean. Now, it's debatable on both those points. As we've said, they are not predominantly subterranean. And they are not completely separated from the foundation. And so even if the county. Requires them. A it in theory, a new owner and resident of the property, this property or others. Could challenge them and say, look, um, they are a threat. Or if they're, if they, after two years, they discover a crack in it. They could say, you know, this imperils my foundation. I'm just going to take them out. And that, whether or not that could be any enforcement action to maintain them. Could be taken is unclear. So this is a very, very real risk and um a complex scenario. And so if there. If if the village is going to be um legislating on this, um. That is something that you might want to consider either in that process or in the work of the stormwater uh task force or both. But I want to flag the complexity of these issues for you. So thanks so much.
Doug, let me. Tell you another complexity is that many builders are not meeting the county stormwater. Retention requirements. They seek a waiver and pay a fee. Hundred percent in local areas, hundred percent of the waivers are granted. So whether those water retention boxes work or not, isn't even an issue. Some builders will say. We don't even, we're we're not even going to put it in. We'll pay the waiver and and walk away. So this is a. An area that we're going to have to deal with in our in our stormwater uh passport. So thank you. Larry, you have two minutes.
Just a brief request, uh. You know, a few years ago, I looked at, uh, I think it was Rockville and Tacoma Park. You could see them on the television. Having their council meetings. Everybody had a microphone. Nobody got blurry or interfered with each other. Uh, so the technology is out there and maybe we would then not have to be yelling at Susan all the time and and. And in addition, in addition, when the speakers come up to speak at the podium, can't hear them. So if you guys could look at that, I'd.
Yeah, we need.
I'm working on it.
Yeah, we need better mics. Thanks. Okay.
I have one survey uh question.
Okay.
Not related to ethics. I I too like you, Arthur. My favorite part of the survey are the comments. Uh, that's the meat and potatoes. And um, I really appreciated that there were a lot more residents this year that talked about the text alert system. Uh, Michael, and I was wondering if we could revisit that because especially for winter, because winter is coming. And we heard it's going to be um quite dicey uh from our earlier weather report. And I just think um. Whatever I can do to work with you on that, um, I really would like to see, and I wondered if the council would be interested in rolling that out. Uh, it could help with uh the closures, um emergencies, um, you all, you know, all sorts of.
I've been working on a proposal. I'm, it's not ready for daylight yet, but um. The idea to move the newsletter off of constant contact to a standalone. Uh, platform and then get a copy editor for it, because that's not my skill set. And then. Get rid of constant contact altogether and transition to an email text like combo service. And I actually sent you the name of the service that I was looking at and. Several of them is about is to use. So that's coming. I don't get your hopes of as far as rollout timeline before winter, which is.
And I just want to congratulate you because you got a lot of great feedback in the survey. So on your anniversary, I just wanted.
Appreciate it.
Good, thank you.
And for my sixty second or less, I just want to say two quick things. First, I just want to thank everybody. I really do. I am not here to be a source of. Friction, nor am I here to create an Al Pacino moment for uh Arthur to say that I'm out of order. You're out of order, you're out of order. So I do want to thank you and I want to thank you. So I want to be, I just want to be, again, I want to be grateful to you all and and again, for the idea of shifting it and just giving a little bit more of that. Time. So I want to thank you. And then finally, uh, Doug, Haromi, that you've been on here for this long. So I I just want to recognize, so Michael. Are we like flagging the idea that if we see something that is in this tail end? That like if if there is another water retention device that is the size of a nuclear submarine that we are going to look like. Look at this because clearly there seem to be maybe some gray areas. So until we decide from a code perspective, are we looking? And then we'll be notified so we can take action before it goes.
Yeah, if we have any new new buildings going up, I'm definitely going to take a duck a second look to make sure that there's nothing like this.
And that made Ron take his mute off, so there must be something he on it.
The the. Yeah, so no, nothing's happened like that in the village um of Martin's additions, but I have heard another municipality has a bio retention box. Being planned and one of and they're having a fight about it um as well. So they they're coming. So.
You got the eyes.
Which is why we need to deal with it and which is why I asked Ron to go ahead and draft a piece of legislation for you all to consider. And I thought we communicated that it wasn't going to be included because we wanted to have this preliminary discussion on building codes first, but we can bring that back up.
Okay. Uh, Ron, did Ron have, do you have anything to say, Ron?
No, Michael covered it.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, council member?
I moved to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. We have a second.
Okay, say hi.
Hi. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.